All right, let's call it order, 7:10. Wow. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. I suppose we ought to introduce ourselves since we've got so many members of the public who may not know who we all are. My name's Joe Winrich. I'm representative of the town of Townsend on the Leland and Gray Board, and I'm actually the vice chair, but I'll be running the meeting tonight. Pick a direction.
And I'm Lyndal Bowles, the representative from Brookline.
Bowles and Duddy from Newfane.
Mike Dolan from Townsend.
Deion Newton from Wyndham.
Bruce Parlam from Jamaica.
Think you know Dr. Dorfman? I'm Stephen John, Superintendent.
All right. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes. I understand that an executive session won't be necessary because the Chair, Emily Long, has asked that we postpone the evaluation of superintendent until your next meeting.
Correct. We're going to push that off until the 20th of January.
Twenty-eighth is your next meeting. By the way, public interest at 28 is the Public Information Meeting regarding the proposed budget for FY '15. You're all welcome to attend that as well, and that will be here.
Seven thirty in the agenda.
No, that's the annual meeting.
Oh.
Information meeting. I think it's the smaller setting. I believe it's in this room. And then, let's see, what other changes? I think everything else, okay. The Chief Financial Officer is not available tonight. He's at the Business Managers Meeting for the state. They're very much concerned about lobbying the legislature for some greater support for our budgets. Their argument is that most of the local boards have done everything they can to restrain, constrain the costs in their projected budgets. Leland and Gray was approved at a money increase of, I don't want to misquote, but I have it here, 2.8 percent. And that certainly is in keeping with the state's guidelines of 3 percent. But despite that, the tax impact is much greater because if the board spent nothing new, it would be a 5 percent increase based on the anticipated tax rate that is recommended by the Tax Division to the legislature, statewide property tax and the per pupil spending grant revenue. If we consider revenue at the schools, we get $9,000 something. The question is something, what, beyond $9,000 it will be this year. Legislature will decide that in May or June, whenever they adjourn, and that will have a great bearing on the public's tax rate to support the schools. So the projections you get from Frank Rucker and myself are really based on our best guess and information from the Tax Department and the administration, at least the Shumlin administration and the Agency of Education. So he won't report. I have no written report. I will share something about other boards that I typically do about what's happening with their budgets. And I think other than that, let's see. Lyndal, will we report something on the advisory board?
I got very short.
And then, as far as the Red Committee, that will be also a very brief report, but we will report something there. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Members of the public.
We have some.
We have some, yeah, we sure do. Is there a spokesperson? Do we just want to take turns?
Hi. My name's Jeanine Agus-Burbexer. I'm a junior here. I am one of many concerned students in opposition to the proposal to move band to an after-school activity as a period nine class. I think, just to get an idea, for people who are in opposition to this, and especially students, could you please stand up? Yeah, so...
Can I count them up a minute?
Everybody is in opposition?
Sure, why not?
About ten students, anyway.
So everybody here.
So this is the issue that everyone's here for, or is there another one the board should be aware of? Great.
There you go.
Oh, that's it.
Oh, you say hi?
Go for it.
Okay. First off, I'm glad to see all students here. I'm Bruce Whippin. I'm co-president of the WCEA, and I've been asked to speak in the membership of the WCEA regarding pro-schedule change for the upcoming school year. According to Scheduling Committee as of this afternoon, next year's schedule is being built on the supposition that will include a ninth period, which would run at the end of the school day. Band would be moved from the traditional school day to this new ninth period. We want it on record that the WCEA is opposed to this change. First, it would interfere with other school programs, athletics, drama, hay programs, and could potentially force a student to choose between playing a sport and participating in band. Band is curricular, not co-curricular, and it shouldn't become a victim of this scheduled change. I'd like to remind folks that Graham Brooks, a former school choice student from Dover, addressed this board a number of years ago and warned about the proposed cuts to the music program. To reiterate what Graham said that night, it would make Leland and Gray less attractive to potential students. Second, it's a slippery slope that marginalized electives. If band can be moved to ninth period, then why not art, woodworking, or physical education? All classes are not looked at as having equal value, and that is neither right nor fair. We value Leland and Gray as offering a well-rounded educational program for our students. The WCEA understands that changes are imminent, but we would like the board to note that we were not part of this decision-making process at all. We'd also like to remind the board that Leland and Gray does have the process already in place for making such decisions. It's called faculty council. By circumventing this process, it brings into question the administration's faith in or the value of the faculty council at all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I need to speak specifically to the impact of period nine on the theater program at Leland and Gray. I'll be brief. Logistically, if this were to, I guess it is a fait accompli, but the problem that I have with it, trying to run an after-school program that attracts, as I think you know, many people in the community, in the school community, is that we then force kids to make a choice between band and theater, frankly, between band and athletics, between band and their after-school job. By having kids come to a rehearsal with me at 3:30 in the afternoon, when many of them these days are taking advantage happily of a late bus, I am bened down from a two-and-a-quarter-hour stretch of working with kids and getting work done and really working on their talent and their craft, I'm down to an hour. As I told Dr. Dorfman when I first expressed my concern about this, basically, the program that you've known here, whether you liked it or not, it's been pretty big and buoyant over the years. The program that you've known here, as we start to marginalize and squeeze other programs around, will no longer be. We'll still have it, but there won't be as many kids whom we'll be able to involve. Thank you.
Amy Landon?
I'm sorry, Amy Landon Berger?
I have a question. I guess I didn't hear about this until very recently, that there is a plan for a period nine. Is that? I have a question, whether you have a grand plan? Is this part of the plan? And what makes this necessary is scheduling problems, which has been, come up time after time after time after time in board meetings and other, you know, in connection with Leland and Gray. And there's been talk about doing half-block, half-period, and then that never happens, you know? Is that still an option, or is that not interesting, or is that, you know, I just don't understand that suddenly you're going to add an extra period after school. I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me. So I just have a question. If you had, if there was a plan, and how did you come up with this, and also whether a half-block, half-period is still something that is an option?
Well, it's not actually, I'm sure there is a plan. It's not a board plan. It could be an administrative plan. So the answers to your questions really should come from Dr. Dorfman. So I would, you know, please, if you want to speak to this, go right ahead. We really don't have a lot of interest here.
So I do have some points to share about this because it was a very, very difficult decision to make and not a happy decision to make. But I'll review them with you and the community and students and staff and the board can deal with it, but you will. Each year, the master's schedule has been built by Power School software with band first and chorus second as the highest priority. Those get scheduled before anything else. The entire master's schedule was created to allow the maximum number of students who requested band to participate. In a three-year period, this mechanism was insufficient in allowing every student who requested band to participate due to other scheduling conflicts. In creating the schedule for this year, so for '13-'14, the Scheduling Committee, which represents administration, counseling, and technology departments, worked arduously to prevent scheduling conflicts during B Block so that students would not have to choose between graduation requirements and single electives. And this is the result of that enormous effort to make sure kids got in. So there were 19 to 21 students who requested to be in band this year. When I say 19, 21, because there's a paper request and then there's a Power School request. Of the 19 who were enrolled in June, a number switched to other courses, most frequently because they had been accepted into Journey East. Since Journey East consumes students' entire spring schedule and eliminates participating in many graduation requirements, their fall schedules then become packed with their grade level requirements, thereby eliminating the first semester band as well as second. And as you know, Journey East occurs every other year, so the frequency of this remains. Journey East students attend chorus, so it doesn't affect their enrollment in that program to that extent because they participate in the spring. Excluding those who teach only middle school, 19 teachers do not teach a high school class during B Block either one or both semesters. Just seven teachers do. At the start of this fall semester, some 50 students were assigned study hall or peer tutoring or had a free pass because they refused to participate in band or chorus, and they had few other options. Leland and Gray was forced to hire second B Block study hall monitor, or PTC monitor, and for the fall term, that's going to cost us $2,250, all these students who don't have a class at that time, who don't want to be in band or chorus. So this spring, we have to do the same thing and hire someone at that rate. In 2002, Leland and Gray had 439 students enrolled compared to 382 this fall, sorry, in fall 2012. Right now, the student population is 367. And 2002, 33 students came from Dover compared to 11 in 2012. 140 students came from Newfane compared to 104 now, that is, looking at last year's statistics. This changed Leland and Gray's student body from 8 percent consisting of Dover students down to 3 percent, and 32 percent coming from Newfane down to 27 percent. Except for Wyndham, Dover and Newfane have the lowest rates of low-income students in the supervisory union. More students from low-income families requires a valiant effort from elementary and middle schools to recruit new music students who otherwise may not have been encouraged and to provide many points of entry for new, hard-sought recruits. So the population has changed, and with the economy, music for some families is not their highest priority. With a significantly smaller incoming seventh-grade class next year, followed by other small classes coming from our union elementary schools, a reexamination of school priorities is necessary to address the needs of all students in our curricular and co-curricular programs and using structures like the master's schedule. The greatest challenge facing our band program is low interest among the current student body. I appreciate very much the very interested and engaged and talented students who are here tonight. Previously, the focus has been on striving to enroll all requesting students in the band course by the means of the master's schedule. The fact is, the master's schedule cannot make B Block available to all high school students requesting band for four years, which would comprise a quarter of all their education. This effort has been unsuccessful and has bred resentment among the faculty, students, and parents who worry about the future, rightfully so, of the band program as much as they do about their own students' musical, individual music education. Instead, the focus needs to be on extensive recruitment and follow-up, reaching out to new students at Leland and Gray and the elementary schools, combining music with other programs of higher enrollment, because there is much higher enrollment in our other areas. I mean, Annie spoke already about the number, how large theater is, certainly athletics. So that students can be introduced to, new students to Leland and Gray can be introduced to instrumental lessons, getting music lessons who haven't had it before. Okay, moving on. Sorry, I'm lost, I'm losing my place here. Read is, okay, it's a list here, that's why. Providing music lessons and after-school rehearsals to those unable to take band, redesigning the program based on feedback surveys from students, and integrating more music of students' choice by polling and involving those in the decision-making process. Based on school enrollment projections and current student interest, a creative and daring recruitment effort must be undertaken in order for the band course and related co-curricular programs to grow and thrive. Over the past year or more, Leland and Gray's music department, in collaboration with the elementary school teacher and counseling department, have taken some steps, but regretfully, it has not furthered the enrollment in the program. At the same time, enrollment in the other programs remain high, and I have specific statistics about the percentage of middle and high school students enrolled in the various co-curricular programs that we offer. And the last thing that I can add, if it's of interest, regards the way that arts education has been not of emphasis in comparison to science and science, technology, engineering, and math, and agricultural programs as well in Vermont and elsewhere. The push for an arts-centered community to launch a creative economy, you might remember that, there was a big push in the early 2000s, a creative arts economy that was going to save Vermont, notably Villas Falls, that was a place that was going to become the future in terms of the way a thriving community can look like, has fallen short, and Governor Shumlin and President Obama's focus has been on science, technology, engineering, and math, as I said. And what we're finding from incoming parents is that they are looking for a well-rounded, high-quality academic and advanced programs to best prepare their children and reduce potential barriers to higher education. The high cost of college and poor economy has caused shrinking humanities majors, this is quoted from the Times this year, "and a growing emphasis on new career ventures such as biomedical engineering, energy engineering, video game design, emergency management," things that are very different. So for all, I mean, that's, you know, had there been a much greater push at the national and statewide level for expanding the arts, then perhaps that would be, you know, maybe there would be more parents who would be asking for that. So for all of these reasons, but primarily, it's the 50 students who don't have a class during B Block.
So the question about whether you're looking into a half-block, half-period system, is that?
We did look at that, and what we found was, since it conflicted with something else, so most of the high school programs' courses are a long block, so if it's offered as a period, it still conflicts with a block. There aren't very many, if any, period-long classes this year. We tried to do it, it's going to be, last year, and it was not very successful.
You tried to do that last year?
We had more period-long classes for high school students last year than we do this year, and the reason why we don't have as many this year is because it was still causing a lot of conflicts. So what I'm trying to say is that having banned a period-long during the day, if we don't change the rest of the schedule, still makes it just as unavailable for students.
And why not?
So can I just point out that during your presentation, you called band a co-curricular activity three times at least, and I think that the board should be aware that that means that we don't offer high school band as part of our curriculum anymore. That's all I can take from that. I heard that.
Referring, because I was referring to after-school co-curricular programs, it's true. Of course, I talked about band as a course, which would remain as a course as period nine next year.
But you compared it...
But when I talked about enrollment in other programs, I'm comparing enrollment in co-curricular music programs.
Why would you do that?
Because it matters. It shows what our students are interested in enrolling in and participating in after school.
Good.
But, yeah, okay.
Joe, can I ask you?
Thank you.
I think that what I would respectfully request is that this discussion really needs to be a thorough one and certainly with appropriate skepticism, but articulating what the questions are and what the suggestion is for a solution. I sense that the group here feels a solution is to do nothing and continue as we have been. If there are other solutions, the administration is certainly, well, hang on a minute.
Is there another solution? Is there any other way to get around what has, it seems like, already been decided?
Well, let me speak for my position in the matter. This is not regarding the board. I want to assure the public that there is no interest or magic in a period nine. I have no affection for the number nine any more than eight, or six, or seven. I don't want to be sarcastic about this, but you seem to attribute some motive or some hidden plan about this that I think is really inappropriate.
No, I think we just, I think we just want to know if there's another solution.
Yes, and that's the struggle. I think that the difference of opinion at this particular juncture is that, from Dr. Dorfman's point of view and using the master's schedule and looking at it from everywhere, Six Ways to Sunday, have not been able to find a previous, a solution that works. I know when I was middle school principal here, I attempted to do something as well. It is very difficult, given our limited matrix of students, time, and staff, to get everybody what they want, and that's what we're facing. Now, if nine, in running the schedule, doesn't increase the number of students, then there's no purpose in having it. I mean, we're not wedded administratively to having a period nine. It's worthwhile trying because it hasn't been tried before in terms of the schedule. If it doesn't get more than 19 or 21 students that want to be in band, what's the point? Now, let me, I want to appeal to our board chair. I do think that the discussion back and forth can be helpful, but it isn't the discussion that yet has reached the board's level of decision-making. If you are attempting to lobby the board because you're opposed to schedule nine, I mean, period nine, I think that that is fine, but you certainly haven't engaged in the conversation with the administration sufficiently to be able to give an opportunity to address it. Now, maybe you have and you haven't gotten the proper answer. In that case, you need to talk to me. I'm open.
Sure. Go ahead. Since you've already spoken, I'll let you go first.
Yeah, first, I'm a little confused. I'm in the official, at a school board meeting, but it seems to be a superintendent's meeting, so I'm interested in talking to the board. With respect to this ninth period, if there's a multitude of classes being offered ninth period, if there are buses every day of the week, every week of the year, after ninth period, if there are no co-curricular activities until after ninth period, then ninth period has meaning. It's a term that means something, and the board would need to decide whether you want to extend the school day an extra 42 minutes for an extra period or not. If it is not all of those things, then it's a semantic fiction, which means nothing other than a new name for the after-school band program. So that's the first thing, I think it should be clear. It's not clear, is ninth period, is the school adding a ninth period, which we're going to fill up with a lot of classes, band being one, or like all the electives? Or if it's only, band is going to happen after school during ninth period, but there's other co-curricular activities at the same time, then that term has no meaning, and I would respectfully suggest that you strike it from the record because it's misleading. Gives you the impression that band is curricular when it is not. Secondly, band has been dying the death of, you know, 300 cuts, if not 1,000, over the last few years, and it's been tough. I understand that the scheduling situation is a very tough situation. I understand that students who want to take band and want to take Journey East have that problem. We have these problems. We have scheduling problems. We have size problems. We have problems with students coming in from other towns. And Dr. Dorfman, this idea about a, you know, energetic and new-thinking way of recruiting students and energizing a band program, those suggestions all make perfect sense, and I think they're absolutely right. However, they sort of fly in the face of, at the same time, reducing the program to after-school, possibly in conflict with other co-curricular activities. So that's giving two messages at once. You can't really recruit something up and at the same time be reducing its value, either its perceived value or its actual value in the school community. So you've got to figure it out. If you want to attract people to band, then attract people to band and do that. If you have scheduling problems, try to fix the scheduling problems, but when you, when band seems to be, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, if you've got a whole schedule for this ninth period figured out and nobody's going to be stepping on band's toes, you know, I don't know what kids who are not in ninth-period classes are supposed to do, waiting for 3:30 to come around when they can actually start their practices. So I got a feeling band is going to have to be conflicting with all those things. So if that's the case, then stop calling it ninth period, call it band as after-school activity, and decide if that's something you're really willing to do to our students. On that topic, I would submit that that is a drastic mistake, even if you do not care about the cultural aspects of music, which would be a huge mistake, and you only cared about mathematics and reasoning, thought processes, then you could go set, check out any number of studies that will tell you absolutely scientifically that music education has beneficial brain impact on students and student learning. Then, you can go back to the cultural part, which you threw out, which you, of course, would not do, and you know that the cultural aspect of Leland and Gray's music historically has been huge in this valley. And this is a valley where, you know, people here don't book down to Rattleboro and all, there aren't places to go on, and so this is actually a cultural place. And when we have band concerts in band, which is a high-quality event, that's a really wonderful thing for our community and for our society in this town. When we slowly, you know, we cut a third of the, you know, part of the position for the band leader a few years ago, we have some scheduling problems, now we're having extra remedial English and math classes, which are absolutely important, I'm kind of thinking to myself, well, you know, the support classes for those, that seems like something that might work after school. I'm questioning, why is it that band gets chosen to be this after-school activity when it has demonstrably, you know, right now, maybe band's suffering a tough time? There's a number of factors. So what we're saying is, okay, band's suffering a tough time, let's kind of give up on it because the governor and the president are all about science, and that's short-sighted.
Yeah, I would just like to, I'm sorry, I'm cutting ahead of some people. I would just like to respond to that gentleman, that this may seem like a superintendent's meeting and not a board meeting, because quite frankly, I can speak for myself, I think I'm speaking for yours, we are not aware at all of the ramifications of this issue, and I am so grateful that you're here to explain and to speak very eloquently about this, but I think Mr. John has made a good point. If these concerns could be put in a way that would come through the administration and principle and then to the board, we might have a fairer hearing, because quite frankly, we have not been involved in this in any way, so it's not fair to you or fair to the administration to ask us to take a position on this. And what you're saying makes sense. And what you're saying makes sense, but we have no idea how it's falling into the bigger picture at this point. So, I just want to answer, I know it seems that it's not a board meeting, but I think it's because I, I think the others don't have any idea of the ramifications.
I'd like to make reference to what Bruce said at the very beginning, which is that there is a process at Leland and Gray called Faculty Council. And if this were to have come to Faculty Council, you have dozens of really good minds who have had experience with some of these problems. And we put them all together and we actually discuss solutions that then can be presented and hashed out. And it's organic. And that's why I love this place. That's why when I first came here in nineteen ninety-six, people worked together to solve problems. But the Faculty Council was not involved in this at all, nor was the Scheduling Committee. And I'm sorry, with all due respect to Dr. Dorfman, that's a problem because it's handed down and it's not, it's not the thoughtful process of a group of people who care deeply about what they do and who love our kids. I have to say one other thing. As much as STEM is a movement in the country, so is STEAM, which includes art. And I have to say one other thing because then I know other people would like to speak. This young lady right here, a piece of hers will be performed next Wednesday at the State House by the Vermont Symphony. And they commissioned her to write it. And I have a personal stake in it, so she's-[706.92][706.92][applause] I, I don't need to say anymore. Maybe they're not coming out the woodwork. You know what? I'm losing numbers in theater too. But the kids who are there are dynamic and brilliant and wonderful. You know what? If there are ten of them, they need our attention because there's Suzie, and there's Kama, and there's Genevieve, and there's Addie. There's Giannina. Thank you.
Sure.
Was there somebody ahead of me?
I'm losing count.
Suzie. Tom.
My name is Tom Walters, and I am the band director of the high school. And first, I want to say that I am here in no way to try to preserve my job. I'm here because I care about kids. Dr. Dorfman used the term well-rounded education. That parents want a well-rounded education. Well, in my opinion, an education without music is incomplete. And Period 9 will make banned gone. It will be over. It's over. No amount of recruiting is going to help if less than fifty percent of the students who want banned get it in their schedule. About an hour ago, I received an email that my numbers from first semester, which were ten or eleven, are now down to six. And it's scheduling. The schedule is broken. For that reason, I joined a committee that formed this year at Leland and Gray to address the schedule. We came up with numerous ideas, suggestions, what we thought were solutions. And we were met with, no, no, no. That the schedule has to stay the way it is. And now, just this week, we learned that it appears that support classes are going to be even increasing in number, which puts more pressure on, on the, on music, on arts. I can tell you that for any number of students, music is the highlight of their day. And I don't know much about this area because I live up in Chittenden County, but I've heard from numerous people that the reason the numbers are down from Dover and descending to towns who have choice is because of this death spiral of the, of the arts program. So, we can recruit all we want to, but if there's no program to come to or if there's no way to fit it into your schedule, it's all for naught. I believe the schedule is broken. Thanks.
So, Dr. Dorfman, you had mentioned earlier that, I don't know if it was you or Dr. John, but that you said that if we had less than nineteen to twenty-one students in the Period 9 class next year, then why would we do this? And so, I'm just wondering, have you sent out, have you sent a poll for everybody in the school eleventh through seventh grade and the sixth graders that would be coming to this school next year? And if not, I'm kind of requesting that you send out a poll to see how many students would join banned and/or chorus after school, banned or chorus for this ninth period?
Hi, I'm Scott Francie. I have what I hope is a solution. You had mentioned earlier that you're changing this because on B Block, there are so many students that aren't doing anything. And I'm assuming you're replacing that. I read on the Power School that there was six things, I think, you wanted to replace it with. Could banned be one of those things?
Well, the students don't want to be in banned. I mean, that's-
No, but could that, how many were there? Were there six of them, I believe, or?
Eight.
Eight, okay. Could you make it nine? Could you make banned be one of them? And the students that wanted banned could do banned?
Any time of the day?
No.
I mean, I don't quite follow you.
No, no, for the B Block. Because you had said the reason you're changing it is because you have these number of students in banned, but this bigger number of students that aren't doing anything in B Block. So, you're going to put these eight programs into B Block, right? Could you make nine programs and banned be the ninth program and do that in B Block? Give, give the students a choice.
I, I don't think I'm following you.
All right, let me, let me, let me, let me rephrase. I think you're suggesting that banned be offered twice a day.
No, no, not having a ninth, but-
Once in the B Block.
Yes, exactly.
It is in B-
It is in B Block.
Yes, but you're changing it, you, you want to change it from B Block to ninth period, right?
Yes.
Could you leave it in B Block as a ninth choice instead of having eight choices? Have nine choices and have banned as one of those choices?
Well, it's already a choice.
Right now, that's the basis upon which we have the students we have, right?
Uh-huh.
And if, if not, if offering it a ninth period separate from any other academically-scheduled class during the regular, during the present concept of the school day, by the way, that's probably going to change in the future. Most many of us realize people have to be taking classes at night eventually. But the, the, it's a matter of this schedule, seeing what happens. And if it doesn't meet the greater good of the students, that is, a banned sustaining a banned program, then there's no sense having it. You might as well stick with the B Block. As Suzie says, that's really what, what the question is. I mean, who is, which, which schedule is going to serve the, the most students the best? And including making sure that banned is sustained or expanded?
But why couldn't you leave banned the way it is? And the students that aren't taking that, have them, instead of taking nothing, require them to take one of those courses?
Well, actually, I, I can address that. That, that would be an issue that probably would come before the board. The, there is a school with ninety students up north, Cabot School, that does require banned participation, music participation of everybody. And everybody has to take lessons. They don't have any courses, you know, per se. They don't have the same approach to, you know, to meeting the standards through courses and course credits. So, they're, you know, they avoid that conflict. But that, that certainly is a model that we have discussed administratively. I don't think anybody thinks that it's, it's as workable with this size school, but it doesn't mean it can't be considered in, in the future. I, yeah, just publicly for the record, since the video's on and all, I just want to make sure that, I, I don't think any of you should question my commitment to the arts and music. I mean, I, I sing with the acapelli group because I think it's very important to model, as a male, the importance of music in a person's life. And there aren't too many guys that are willing to sing like, you know, sing high and sing well. So, I try to model that. And I was made fun of when I was your age for that. So, you know, I, I, it's a sensitive issue for me and one that I want to assure you. This administration is dedicated to finding the best solution. We are not satisfied with the cycle of debt that someone referred to. But we do have to face the declining enrollment. And what we can do to sustain an opportunity for every single child that wants to be in the banned. And if this is not a workable solution to reach that result and outcome, then we return to what we have now. Presumably, it won't be any worse than we are now. But that's the question.
We're saying it's not a workable solution.
Your, your suggestion wasn't to put everybody in-
I don't really believe the answer is-
Everybody in banned, right?
No, I'm not saying put everybody in banned. You're just saying-
Well, banned is already offered in B Block. So, you can leave that as an alternative.
Leave that as an alternative, exactly.
But it seems to me that by moving banned away from B Block, where it competes with other courses and conflicts kids out and giving it its own space, it would allow, it potentially will allow more students to take it. Now, maybe, maybe not, maybe there are only ninety kids that want to take-
At the detriment of other programs, at the detriment of other programs.
Scott, there are, you know, the stuff that was on, in Dr. Dorfman's article, those are new, it was, it looked like it was all in a specific time period. Those are throughout the day.
Oh, I thought that was all, okay.
Right, I think that that maybe were the-
Okay.
The glitch.
No, I assumed that was all the B Block thing.
And they're for kids, I think, in, in academic need, I think. I mean, we're all, it's new to all of us, so.
First off, Joe, it's not in its own space. It's competing with sports programs and stuff.
But it's not, right now, it competes in the master scheduling software with other courses. And if you request it, you request something else, you can get out. Presumably, since sports and the other co-curricular activities aren't scheduled, although they exist in a master schedule concept, it would allow the software to say, oh, look at that, we got sixty-five kids in banned now. And then we try and figure out how to-
And no theater program.
And kids wonder, can I play soccer? Can I do banned? There's already so much after-school.
Oh, yeah, I know. They already wonder, can I play soccer? Can I be in the theater? Can I do this? Can I do that?
And also make it worse.
I'm not sure there's a perfect solution.
We did, we did meet with, a part of our leadership team includes Marty Testor, Athletic Director. And we did meet with him at length about this. And he explained that the high school athletics take place generally after the middle school athletics. So, it's later in the afternoon. So, and, and he said, and if, and if there is an adjustment that needs to be made, we would have to adjust it. The conflict with theater, and Annie and I talked a bit about this before, is perhaps not, there's, no one has posed, pitched an ideal solution out there. But how can, the mu, the music program already works to an extent with the theater program. How can that relationship flourish more? So, I mean, I-
I do have to address that, which is that when you're doing what I do, you know, I want to be able to pick a play that, that has, I, I don't want, it's, it's inappropriate to, to expect that we're always, all year long, going to be working music and theater. Because there are, you know, a gajillion scripts out there that we could do. And that's, I think, an unreasonable expectation. And also, it sort of denies the fact that our music educators have a curriculum that goes way beyond musical comedy and incidental music in a show.
I think Dr. Dorfman just said something that is the essence of the problem. She said the leadership team made a decision. How many faculty members are on the leadership team?
Well, there aren't.
There are none. How many students are on the leadership team? There are none. If it was collaborative, we might not be sitting here tonight. Plan some.
It could have been collaborative. Maybe one of each of the current banned members would have gone to one of those fifty kids in B Block and said, give it a try.
Yeah.
Organic, the way that we solve around here.
I have a question. Historically, did, did the banned start being cut away when block scheduling started? Is that where this all began? Because it's been a downhill slide for quite a few years. And, you know, we lost our marching band and we lost our, one of our banned teachers due to the block scheduling that they were, the banned was always up against the core classes. And another thing I just want to say is that I think historically, incoming seventh graders do not sign up for banned or chorus, that sort of thing, because they're, they're nervous about the whole new scheduling routine. So, I don't think historically, there's a lot of seventh graders that sign up right away, especially, you know, at the beginning of the school year. But I think, you know, maybe we're looking at the wrong thing here. Maybe it's the block scheduling that is the problem to all of the scheduling. If that is where the banned started being cut. It'd be interesting to see historically where that all started.
It started in ninety-six about, block scheduling, I think.
Ninety-six, we voted, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
And when, I mean, I'm not quite sure when the, the, like, what the history in terms of, when you felt that it was shrinking enrollment, if you say.
Marching band was what, went out two thousand and seven or eight?
So, ten years later.
Yeah. The first year of block scheduling, the, the numbers went way, way up. And then, as it became more clear that it was hard to get in all the requirements, it, it started to erode somewhat. Two things that I think have made a big difference is additional requirements. And I think, and this is only a feeling, I think the computer scheduling did it also. I, I think back when we had Mr. Toll with his yellow sheets of paper, that many more people got in to the classes they wanted because he scheduled individual students to get the best possible program he could get for them. And right now, the, the computer doesn't make any difference between Joe and Jane. It just knows your number, you signed up, your number, you signed up. And I'm not saying we should go back to paper and pencil, but I am saying that I think that it worked better.
I'm a little bit confused because the algorithm is built in that banned is scheduled first, then chorus.
Yeah, but if banned is scheduled first and then, if you need to take other things or taken out, then that doesn't matter.
And about twenty students requested banned this year.
And fifty percent of them got it. That's a really low number. And it was true the year before. So, say there's no interest is wrong. There's interest, they just can't get it in the schedule.
Which is why we're here tonight and Period 9 has been proposed.
And you're saying we don't think Period 9 will work.
I have a comment. And as the school gets small, or the student population gets smaller and smaller, the block system is more and more of a problem too. Because, is that correct? If it was a, a bigger school, a block system would work better, or is that?
I'm not, I'm, from what I understand, that whether it's the periods of the day or the blocks of the day, it's still the same number of courses over the, the school year. If we had more sections of courses, like in a larger school, that there might be eight periods of, of art or, or, yeah, where the same courses offered all day long, then there's more possibility. But we're talking about, in this case, a quarter of the students scheduled over four years of high school to be in banned.
But I do, but I do think it has to be looked at in the, in the big picture too. Because it's not just like everybody wants banned. And I, I think when it comes to how, how to attract students to the school, because that should be one of the, obviously, the things that you want. You want to attract, and you don't want to lose students. And that's what happened, is happening. I said, that's why I was, in the beginning, I, I asked if there, if there is a master plan that we're gonna, we know that our, our student population is going down, but we're gonna try to make ourselves known as the school that has this to offer, that to offer. And it used to be, I mean, Leland and Gray was, that, that was one of the main reasons, as I understand it, why people came from Dover to Leland and Gray. Like the music and the, you know, arts program. So, you know, it's like, I just feel that Leland and Gray is not, is not going to make a gold star in any real area unless you find your little, you know, niche or whatever. That's, and, and I think in the big picture, everybody should be, everybody should be, want this, to attract students and not lose students. And I wonder, are we aware of why students are moving out and/or not moving in?
I'm only attending Dover meeting probably here, so I guess I'll share with you what I know from Dover. They're-
They're, they had eighty parents come to last year's town meeting, or eighty people that they've not seen very often at town meeting. They all came to vote on the article that presented to the town, the question of how much, how to pay the tuition, full board, for Burn Burton.
Right.
So, those people voted yes, the motion carried, they left, the town is paying the full tuition for Burn Burton. Towns are not obliged, school districts not obliged to pay for independent schools' tuition any more than the statewide average, unless the town has a special article and so votes. Obviously, there's great interest in going to Burn Burton now at Dover, and there was. I don't have any indication that people are going to Burn Burton for music or the arts or, I really can't say, because I haven't been surveyed. But I know that that is, when Dr. Dorfman explains the change in demographics we have in the student body here, and the reduced number of students from Dover, that practically all of those are going to Burn Burton.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess that has, that's part of the reason.
I think if we're, if we're looking in a competitive attracting situation, you know, that kind of atmosphere, Leland and Gray has, has in some ways, to some degree, when I was here, we took for granted the fact that we had a pretty good attractive program, and we were getting consistent families and students from these towns, and that has changed demographically in Dover anyway. Now, in Wardsborough, it hasn't changed to that extent, though, Wardsborough's another tuition town, but it could change. The Wardsborough School Board is presenting an article to the public, returning to the statewide average for tuition, which is much less than Burn Burton's tuition. That may have an effect on people, I think it limits people's choices to the public school, the public schools, the boards, the school districts are obliged to pay the announced tuition from the public schools, regardless of whether it's above the statewide average or not. And Leland and Grace has always been above the state average, because we have, by formula, we have expenses and we have fewer students, so our higher tuition is justified by state formula. We can't really just set a formula, set a tuition any way we want, we have to go by a formula from the tax department, the agency of education. But you make some good points, I appreciate it. This is a very difficult situation, I would share with the public that the prospects of this board maintaining the learning opportunities in a cost-effective way will become increasingly challenging as our population is further reduced. Our projections for FY sixteen are for students, student body in the neighborhood of three sixty or three fifty. There really aren't that many students out there, and that's, that's a troubling issue for many schools across Vermont, including my elementary schools in this SU. There was another one with a hand up.
No, but I don't, it's, it's fine.
I find it interesting that as a school board member, I'm probably the least informed person on this topic.
Yep. First I can, I'll just.
This came to our attention tonight. It was not on the agenda. This falls under the administration's responsibility. It is made imminently clear to school board members that it is not the board that runs the school, the administration runs the school and reports to us. I had heard something from my daughter, but I had not had any discussions, it was, I knew, basically, at this point, I still am learning by hearing from Dr. Dorfman and from folks here. It's a very complicated topic. There is no simple pull-it-out-of-the-hat solution. In my heart of hearts, I know that moving music to an after-school program is basically going to kill it, it's going to be the nail in the coffin, this is not, this is what nobody wants, but this is the consequence, and we should all be well aware of it. But this is a complicated thing that needs to be discussed, needs to be worked out. Annie had mentioned that there is a process, I am not in, this is not my area of expertise, but there has to be another way than just the fait accompli.
But that's been used twice, I just point out, there is no fait accompli, the schedule is going to be based on what works best for the most students. Sure?
So, Dr. Dorfman, um, just so I'm understanding some things here, the remedial courses, they have, they occur during school day, like, you know, classes that hit.
Academic support classes happen.
Yes, during school days.
There are a few students who get support after school, but it's not an academic support class.
Because that's a possible area of, you know, and little way, right, to make more.
Well, the students who need academic support, they, they'll provide when it's not, I mean, they'll, if they request band, they'll have academic support when that's on, at a time where band is, let's say it right, if a student requests band and academic support, generally they can get support, because it's not a conflict.
There's not a conflict with that, okay. Then, you know, this thing about if there's a will, there's a way, and, you know, I think a few years back, when I first got on the board, we had low enrollment in foreign language classes, is that, okay, and then we made foreign language a requirement coming into seventh grade.
Sort of, but we enroll nearly all of them, yeah.
And now, it's pretty robust, and if we value music, it seems, I don't, I'm not even sure kids even under, have had, as you've just been mentioning, the low associaticomics sort of, you know, issues, are they having, had they haven't had the chance to discover it, and if we require it, give them that opportunity to discover it, and maybe you can find enrollment surging. I mean, it's just, because we're not giving, we are definitely marginalized in it. You know, for, and, yeah, and we're not helping to, you know, promote it at all, but like, if there was a way to somehow acquire it, I mean, I don't know.
Go ahead.
I'm Gerald Julian Cissé, and I'm a Spanish teacher at the school. And what Dionne says is correct, that, and it wasn't because of a lack of interest, the enrollment was down because of scheduling conflicts. And again, back to the same thing, so we did make it that seventh, incoming seventh graders do take foreign language, it's not required, the majority of them take Spanish, French, or Chinese. So, it's robust in the middle school, but as we get into the higher levels, again, it dwindles down. Last year, I had seventeen students requesting Spanish four, which we never get to that level, Spanish four. When I started school, started teaching here seven years ago, at most, we would have a combo of Level Three and Four with maybe five or six students in it, and then the program is built up, so that last year, I had seventeen students, but only eight were able to be scheduled because of a conflict, and it always is, last year and again this year, that Spanish four, Spanish Three in the fall, Spanish Four in the spring, are always up against AP English. So, where's the choice there? Students are going to take AP English. I have those dedicated students who in the fall, and I have to do independent study with those students, where they will come to my class every other day and then make up the work outside of class. So, it's robust at the seventh and eighth grade levels, because it's spread out, it's a period class, so they do Spanish for Language One in seventh grade, Language Two in eighth grade, but thereafter, it drops down. Same thing happened again for me this year, I have many students who wanted to be in Level Three and Four, but it's scheduled against AP English. So, again, it's the scheduling issue. So, as much as we can build them all up, and I think it's a great idea with band, to do what you were suggesting, but at some point, it hits that other block.
It's a block.
Yeah, so, and it's not from a lack of interest, I have so many kids who want to do, I have so many independent study kids who are willing to juggle around and figure out how they can continue with language. And I think it's the same, the French department too, and for Chinese, to get them to the higher levels. And we try to offer AP in those classes at the higher levels too, but, you know, if they can't get to that level because of conflicts.
I'm Jane Olmstead, I'm a social studies teacher, my classes are pretty full, just so you know. But I have a question about the, the period nine, is there a school bus, are the school buses going to be delayed so kids can get home after period nine, or how's that going to work? There's a four thirty bus that goes Monday through Thursday. This, since it's begun, there have been several weeks of the year where it hasn't run, and next year it would run.
But what about Friday?
So, no, there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be on Friday.
And you also said before that you had talked with Marty Tesco about changing the, maybe changing sports scheduling, and you said, oh, well, just middle school will be affected, so is that, middle school kids will have no option between any co-curricular activities, because their sports happen at two forty-five, right, when the period nine happens?
Their school bans are, their schedule would not change.
The school bans are during the day.
We're just talking high school.
Okay, thank you.
If I could ask a question of the students, is there another time of the day that, that could be available for you to do band?
I think that actually, we could see, I'm not quite sure how we would, we might do a poll like we did, like we might do with the incoming people for next year, but maybe we could see which block, like, they could say which block would be best for this class, A, B, C, or D, and then maybe whichever block gets the majority of the votes, that would be when band and chorus are. I'm not sure how that would conflict with general music in the middle school and the other music classes like tech of music, but I'm just suggesting that.
Not exactly what I was getting at, but.
I think my answer to that question is kind of a no, because band, second block is a problem, like, I'm losing band next semester to a required course, and I feel like I'll run into that problem whether band's A, B, C, or D block. But one thing that I can assure you is that ninth period is even worse, it's probably the worst. I'm, I want to give you, I want to make sure that you're hearing a student voice. I'm a student who, I'm on the varsity soccer team, I participate in drama, and I'm in band and chorus. And I want you to know that it's just not possible, and I think that's why we're all here, it's, it's because we're worried about band being period nine, because the flaws are egregious, it's, you can't, you can't force a student to choose between so many after-school activities. I just, I think that it shouldn't even be considered, and, I mean, I appreciate that it's, there's been lots of effort into saving the band program, I just don't see why anyone is believing that period nine is a solution in any way.
Absolutely. Can I, Joe? I, I was thinking, you just said we force you to choose next semester between a core class and band.
Yeah.
And you think that's a better choice to leave you with than choosing an after-school activity? Than band?
I think the schedule, just overall, is a big problem, and I think everything needs to be helped out. It's not just band that is suffering, I think.
Oh, there's, there's choices constantly for classes, I see that.
Absolutely, so.
So, but, but this, it's no better to pick, to say, I could have time after school and still have band and allow you to get that than it is to pick against a core class and lose band for a semester like you're doing.
I understand your question, I think, I think, I guess by saying that, I'm saying that we should fix the whole schedule, and.
That's a much bigger issue.
I understand that, but we've been having problems for a long time, and I think, maybe instead of moving individual classes around, maybe we could address the whole schedule.
But as a whole child, she's.
By my, I'd just like to have a little poll right now, how many of the students here want to just leave it the way it is?
Wait, can you?
Well, let's forget pretty much, let's just say the schedule's like it is now. Is that a solution that you support as students?
No. If it was either that or the period nine class, then I would be supportive of the block B, band and chorus.
Yeah.
So, you're saying, suggesting that we prioritize personnel in a way that offers those two options?
No. I'm simply.
The choice is between status quo and period nine, you all prefer status quo, correct?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm asking, because, I mean, I'm interested in a student voice in the poll at this point, because you actually know what your conflicts and what your values will be in your decision-making process in terms of decisions. So, you know, you're the people that are most concerned about this issue, so you're the people that should have a voice in this.
Raise your hands.
You know, I hate to put you in a spot, but I mean, after all, you're asking the administration to come up with a solution or a choice or a different issue, well, status quo or period nine, what's, what's your vote, students?
Didn't they just answer that?
They just answered it. No, I didn't see the hands, I didn't. Anybody ready to stand up?
Stand up.
Stand up, okay. And is anybody of the students, go ahead, sit down, thank you, any of the students want to go with, uh, period nine? Okay, so that's pretty clear. And you're a majority of the band, are you not?
Yeah.
And you have one nineteen in it, right?
There's like ten.
There's ten, but as Mr. Walters said, that's only about half of the people who want to be.
Well, when I'm saying twenty, there are twenty that are requested, I know that there are twenty that are requested, so.
Oh, they're not in the band.
We have almost twenty here, don't worry, what do we have?
But not all of us are in band.
Oh, it's on chorus people, okay.
And also, I'm not in band, if that's truck, truck, what you're saying.
Okay, well, all right, I have to take that into, but, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense, because, I mean, you've come here to be heard, and I want to make sure that I'm getting the message clear.
If we were to continue.
Well, since we're taking polls, I'm wondering what, how people feel about a totally different structure to the schedule.
Well, that's a little vague.
That's way beyond the scope.
I don't mind either, I don't mind getting it, I mean.
My thesis statement is that the schedule is broken, there are any number of classes that, I just don't think we're serving students well. So many students get bumped out of so many things, I think we ought to look at a different structure of the day. Same number of minutes, just chop them up differently.
Wait, so you're suggesting like maybe six blocks, like going for all students' period schedule, or six blocks in a day, for instance, for high school?
We started a committee to explore this, we came up with many different options, and they all went nowhere.
Did they, did they prove out? Or were they just ideas?
What does prove out mean?
Run through the scheduling process of requests for students to prove that they can work.
Peter stated that that would be too arduous at this point, and he wouldn't do it until we got some kind of green light from the administration to even try.
Okay, well, maybe this is inactive.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I've been listening to people complain about band scheduling conflicts for the last ten years.
More and more.
Or more. Actually, before that, I was over at Hillary School. But I was sitting here having the same thought, what if we have nine periods and they're all, that was class period of the day, we shorten every other class, and.
Run a whole year's schedule.
Run a whole year's schedule with nine periods and, personally, I would throw in there, wipe out study halls and free time, and everybody required to have a class every period. Well, sign up where they want, it's very good.
Then you'd be talking like thirty-seven minute classes, because right now, our period classes are forty-two minutes, so with eight periods.
I'll be the first one to say, I have no idea if this works or not, I make bread on my school.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, but, but the fact is, with eight periods, each one is forty-two minutes long, so with students coming in.
Is there a state minimum requirement for a class period?
No, just a class, just, well, it used to be, one course is a hundred and five, how many hours?
They need more, it's a pretty fine hours.
Is this, is this problem common to all schools in Vermont? Hasn't, haven't other schools come up with solutions that work better than others? Do we have to like reinvent the wheel, start from scratch?
Yeah, there's got to be, there's got to be something.
That was some of the work that we did in the scheduling committee, we contacted a number of different schools that are the same size basically as Leland and Gray, and... and we studied their models and incorporated that into our proposal. So, yes, others, some schools manage it, some don't, but we tried to find ones who, we, we studied other schedules and tried to take what we thought would work for us.
You know, it seems from what Dr. Dorfman said, and what Dr. John said, from what almost everyone here said, this is clearly a scheduling problem, but yet you proposed a band solution, which is not gonna do anything. It's not gonna solve the problem. It's not gonna, the problem will persist if not with band and with other things. If we have a scheduling problem, let's fix the schedule, let's not fix something that's not the problem.
Sure enough. See, the, this seems to be a band issue.
I also have one more comment. Band just doesn't end at high school. I am a parent of somebody who moved on to college and is now a music teacher, very important for her future, and there's many that left here that went on to become music teachers, chorus, band.
Composers.
Yes, composers, yes. Real important. It doesn't just stop here, and so it is an important part of the arts and the curriculum. It isn't like soccer. I don't know how many, you know, major soccer players have come out of Leland and Gray, but I think we've had a lot more musicians that have made their mark, and I think to put them in the same basket is not correct. Also, I, I have to say that I don't recall ever, ever, hearing of so many scheduling problems when it was your basic eight-period day. And the block scheduling does not give you the amount of room to offer band maybe twice a day. It doesn't have to be every period, but at least have the option of having it twice a day, so that it isn't always up against a core class. And going up against the sports, there's already a big animosity between, you know, the coaches and the arts teachers, and, you know, that, that's always a hassle of who's getting who for, because it is a small school, who's getting what student for the after-school thing. So I don't think moving that is going to help that situation any at all. And I think to, to work it within the school day and turn it into eight periods with more options is, is really what you need to get back to.
And I just wanna finally reiterate that it will totally change the shape of other offerings that we have come to rely on, our sports program and our theater program. It will change the shape of that, so we will not have the numbers anymore. If everybody who wants to do music goes band as they wish, yeah, in period nine.
Nobody yet, and, and I am, it is my thing, nobody's mentioned samba band, which is a lot of the public view, that's who goes down to the Hepper Parade, that's who plays at the races, and who's at the Health Fair. That's Leland and Gray a lot to the outside of our community, community. And samba band is almost entirely made up of band students and athletes. And the samba band won't survive nine periods.
They meet after school.
Yeah, they meet, it's a co-curricular thing, it's vibrant, they, they wanna show up, but they don't wanna quit band for samba, or I'd have to do it later, and then the athletes, the high school athletes can't come to samba. It's not only saying we don't want band, which I feel it is, it's, it's squeezing out samba. There would be no time. Acapella maybe could need a thirty or something.
Is there a time when we could discuss the scheduling issue in further detail?
Good question.
Like, would we talk about this at a board meeting, or would we discuss this in a different meeting of some sort?
I think that would be a meeting you'd wanna first pick up with the administration rather than the board.
And how would you go to the administration? So, and.
That is the bus, by the way, coming for you, sorry.
I mentioned to the student council members who would need to see about it, I said that the first place would be to appeal to me. And then if you don't like my decision, as Dr. John said, you'd go to him, and then at that point, you would go to the board.
That, that was a great question. Let's put it right.
And it would, during that appeal process, that we would have that deliberation. We, we had some tonight, but there's much more to be had. I have more questions of the students, so it would, it would be a good venue, and teachers too.
You said we've had the block scheduled since ninety-six, is that it? What's the likelihood?
No, ninety-eight.
I don't think that's the issue. Is the same number of periods or blocks spread over in the school?
Repet, like Dale was saying, instead of going with four blocks, it's going with eight periods.
Yeah, but eight periods over the year is mathematically the same thing as two sets of four.
So I understand the math, so it's, it's more like how you divide the hours in the course of the day.
We still have the conflict, though.
I, I, it's not that, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna present in any way a position of adamancy about it. I, I did actually sit with Brownie Toll for hours every single year when I was working here for ten years, going over those yellow pads before we had a program. And I know that the mathematical program is impersonal. That's a very good point. And in fact, there has been no reduction in the amount of caring for the individual student regarding trying to fix the scheduling after the program does its, its thing. It cannot do its thing to the satisfaction of most of us, including me, because there are not enough options, and having eight during the year, although people have fond memories of the eight-period day, I've taught under both, I adminis, I've, you know, I've been a building scheduling administrator for both, and, you know, in my experience, it, that is not the issue. What we are facing at Leland and Gray is an expectation that all of our students will be able to do all of these things. That's the advantage of a small school. If my son went to a different school in Rattleboro, he was here, went to a different school, he was no longer able to do sports, drama, and music. He had to choose. Big school, lots of periods, lots of offerings. Now, share that comment with some of your other friends and see if it really does make a difference. If really being in a bigger school does enable you to do all three things, it's not likely to be the case. But I'm listening, I'm receptive when it gets to my level about a solution. The computer can, we can invest the time in the computer to run an eight-period day and see what happens. This is not an impossible situation. I think that would satisfy the, the concerns and the perception that people have that eight, that the sched, the program of the day, the schedule of the day is the problem. And I think that that, you know, that question needs to be answered satisfactorily to people like yourselves who are dissatisfied with what the present schedule is. When, respectfully, when Mr. Walters says that the program is, the schedule is broken, what he means is that the schedule is not satisfying all the needs and expectations we have as teachers and as students. And the question is, what is the magic scheduling matrix which will afford that opportunity for all of us? Okay? And that is my particular field of expertise, actually, you know, and I, and I mean, and I'm willing to be engaged in that and at the time that it's necessary.
So you have not run them side-by-side, blocks versus periods, as of yet?
We did when we originally got this program, and we have modified the block to have some half-blocks, as Dr. Dorfman said, right? But this year, we don't have as many because it didn't prove to be the solution that we hoped it would be. Now, I assure you that the basis of this decision administratively is serving the greater good of the most. And it, it isn't that there's something purposely out to benefit, you know, foreign language versus music, or music versus PE. We have conflicting interests, we have conflicting responsibilities within the schedule of the day and the availability of students and staffing. This school is particularly small, that's another issue. Now, Tom and Mr. Walters pointed out that the committee looked at similarly small schools, so, you know, that would be informative. The, the neighboring schools that are of our size are smaller, have less music, have fewer people in band. We have a collaborative study with Wyndham Southwest, and I've often thought, gee, why can't we get our music programs together, our band programs together? That's Twin Valley and Wilmington and so forth. They have even more serious diminished opportunity because of kids not being able to get involved. But, you know, that's, that's another opportunity, but it means collaboration, it means driving, it means busing, it means distance. There are lots of obstacles to overcome, and they haven't, you know, they haven't met with sufficient support from the public to warrant further, further pursuit, or even from the boards and the study group that's been working on it. I'm sorry to talk so long. Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanna make a small comment. I've been watching the scheduling, I've been, my name is Kevin Burke, and I've been, I'm the IT assistant here, and I've been watching the scheduling from the sidelines for the last three and a half years, and it, there's no easy solution. But what I think everybody's overlooking is the priorities that you value and what you wanna place on the curriculum. If music is that valuable, we need to make it valuable, and this is a show of support for that. If academics and AP and support classes are the priority, well, music is gonna get pushed down. So that's where, you know, you have to find a balance. Where are your priorities? Where do you want the school to head? I think somebody else had mentioned that, and it's tough. But if you do it in closed sessions, if you make the schedule in closed sessions and don't include your community, that's where you're gonna end up with problems, which this is just a small sample of, having to usurp your board meeting in order to get their message across. So there has to be an open forum for, for these things to be discussed, because no individual or group of individuals or mass group will have the ideal solution ever. But you can get the best solution possible if you do include a few more people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Anybody else?
So the, I just wanna throw this in, so, so when I first came to Leland and Gray, I was told about all the behavior problems during lunchtime, because there's just too, too, so many kids during that time, not enough space, and so I said, well, why don't you have two lunch periods? And that, we had the first year, people were very upset because clubs often met during lunch, and then they were split up, so it wasn't all, this is two lunch periods for high school. So it's basically three lunch periods a day my first year here. We had a lot fewer behavior problems and no trouble with space or anything like that. But again, it was an imposed solution, and while it solved one, it created another. And what I was getting at was, well, could we go back to, to lunches? I never had lunch in high school, 'cause I wanted to take all the classes I, I could, because they were mainly art classes. So that's just sort of how I schemed through it to be able to make, and with two thousand students in my high school, I needed to do that, to get those classes and still be able to attend my requirements. So I just throw that into the mix as maybe some limmers of change, 'cause that did not require, when we made that change, it did not require an overhaul of the system.
But I think we should talk about this some in the next few days.
And I, I guess I'll say that when I first came here, I was on, I think it was previous to you arriving, you're in a scheduling committee, and we spent the whole year, and each of us took different schools. There were, I remember, Olivia Riley's a junior now, she was an eighth grader on there. So that was four years ago, and, and I just remember, we took the whole year, each of us took about three or four schools, we investigated, got their program of studies, we talked all the different possibilities, and we spent the whole year on that. And then I think the only result that came out of that was that we ended up just aligning the high school and middle school schedules, because prior to that, some of the high school period classes would either begin or end in the middle, or, they just weren't aligned. So now the, the four blocks of the high school are aligned with the eight periods of the middle school. And that was the most significant change that came out of all of that work, and then it kind of died down again. I got on the committee again the beginning of this year, but from day one, when we started talking about it, the solutions or the, the schedule we were looking at, we were told to plan for year two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and nothing now. And I was on there because, as you heard me speak earlier, I wanted to find some other solutions now, 'cause I don't wanna keep losing students that wanna be in my program. So I think what has to happen here is we need to go back to the drawing board and look at other options. This summer, I spent a week at an AP institute, and I canvassed a lot of the teachers who were there one day and are at the end of our program, and I just said, tell me, do you all like your school's scheduling? And, and I got some other ideas, and some of those might be that we end up having something like a nine or even ten period or course offering, but they're not offered every day. It could be that you run a schedule of periods one, three, five, nine on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or whatever, that it's, you're not gonna have every class every day. And that way, we can fit in more, but, I mean, so clearly, we need to go back to the drawing board about it. It's not that we have to reinvent the wheel. A lot of people say, when we were investigating four years ago and this year, they're not happy with their schedule. They're always asking everybody, so there's no ideal situation, but it needs to include the voices of the students and the staff and the larger, you know, administration. We have to work together on this and not just be informed, because as much as you folks have just learned about it, most of us have too. So it has to be a collaborative, you know, process, and it can't be year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. It has to be, you know, sooner than that, because we're losing these kids, and we're losing the reputation of our school. And by two thousand fifteen, sixteen, there won't be a band program, a lot of other things will go down. So I really encourage us all to have more conversations and more around the drawing board.
Yeah, just, I, I think you, Dr. Dorfman, to engage in that process, at least listen to the possibilities. I want you to search your own resources and soul about the situation. How much time do you have to invest in the collaborative process that you hope will result in a better schedule? And are you prepared to invest that time and not get a result? Because it may be, as Kevin says, that we can come up with a better solution if we have more people contributing to the process. But it may be that there is, you know, we may have the best that we can get right now. That's why most of you are loving here to stay the way we are. Now, well, well, you're not willing to accept that, but I'm just saying that at the end of a collaborative process, the collaborative process is not guaranteed that you're gonna have a better solution. That's what I want us to be aware of, 'cause I have to enter into it with that, that kind of objectivity and willing to, to, to invest without getting a, a return.
But Dr. John, I'm not sure if you heard what I said, that the scheduling committee met for dozens of hours this year, and we are now dissolved.
Well, I.
You still have solutions in your book somewhere.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you haven't lost that stuff.
No.
Yeah, so, exactly.
So I mean, it's still available for regeneration.
I hope someone would look at it.
Well, I, I think you may have reason to believe you've accomplished that. I think it's unfortunate that you did not, were not able or did not choose to proceed another way, but that's nothing I'm gonna complain about.
I would just like to reiterate, just because people come and they express opposition to a certain plan does not mean that they endorse the status quo, and I think that we've made this concerted effort tonight to emphasize that we're being thoughtful and we're trying to think about different solutions. So that is not embracing a status quo. That is simply saying, this, this particular solution that we have heard tonight is not one which we find to our liking.
Yeah, and you, you're putting words in my mouth. I'm not suggesting that people are satisfied with the status quo.
That's what you said twice.
Okay, I retract my words, all right? Can I correct what I intend to say? I intend to say that we have to be prepared to investigate an eight-period schedule, the other alternative scheduling opportunities or possibilities, that in fact, we have maximized what we can get in terms of the outcome we seek for the most students getting the most of what they want. And it, you know, it, it's just that, that it's a puzzle. It's not a puzzle new this year, any different than it was last year or ten years ago, when Brownie and I were sitting with it. And we do have reduced parameters to explore in terms of student enrollment and staff resources. And I wish there were other things that were obvious to me. And I wish there were other things that were obvious to me, I would have suggested them. But that doesn't mean you don't have good ideas from that, from that committee that aren't worth the additional expense, effort, and time to explore and satisfy, that they are in fact not going to yield better than what we have now. Appreciate the time. Do you want to say one more thing?
Sure. This might be more relevant at a different time, but I just happen to think, has there ever been a time where this hasn't been an issue? Like where we've had a good schedule and everything's been able to run smoothly? And if so, why don't we look at what happened in that time, like how the schedule was at that time, and follow something similar or exact to that?
This young lady should be an administrator. Never mind, I didn't use her.
Yeah, it actually, it's a very, it's a very good point, and, you know, I go back as far administratively as we can go, probably among the present, if not living, and for the school. And I do know that certainly when we marched the Millennium Parade, that was certainly a high point in terms of the marching band, if that's a measure of the music program. And there are differences, certainly enrollment and staffing. The numbers were bigger.
And requirements.
And the requirements were less. The graduation requirements have been increased slightly, I mean, in science. The need, the demands of No Child Left Behind, and the emphasis on standards and performance for all students in math and language arts have had certainly a tremendous bearing on where, where schools, at least administrators and superintendents, have been held accountable by the public. So I certainly have advocated with all the school districts, elementary school districts, there's not a single school district that has reduced its band in music this year or last year. I don't support it, and I never will. But we do have a problem in a couple of schools where we have a full-time professional music educator for five students. It's expensive. And if the public is continuing to be willing in those small schools to pay for those programs, they will continue to be part of the budget, because it'll always be my recommendation. They fortunately don't have the scheduling conflict. Thank you. All right, we can move on to the next thing?
Thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you for coming.
Joe, if I'm, if the public, if you're planning on leaving, Ken, I just want to share something with you here visually, because we've got a holiday coming up. I've shared this with all the boards, and, you know, before you leave, I'm going to share with the board, but I, you probably see what that is? Okay, so, you know, we have a holiday coming up. And Dr. Martin was a King junior, and this is actually the printed address, I Have a Dream speech, 11/1963, at the mall in Washington, and it hangs over the copier in my office. If you ever have time to stop by, I hope you check it out. The reason I call it your attention is because I also serve on a standard board for licensure educators in the state of Vermont. And I call to their attention this holiday, and the fact that with the new Secretary of Education, it's an opportunity for us to reflect and dream about what can happen. And I think your meeting tonight, and your interest tonight, is a dream about what would be the ideal, what could happen, what is possible. So Dr. King would commend us all to give it our best effort, and feel the better for having entered into the dream and the effort to see it fulfilled. I know that in my life, great progress has been made in civil rights, insufficient progress, but great strides. And I hope that in your lives, as students, you'll see the same progress, not only in civil rights, but in education, an educational opportunity and equity for all. We are in the business of dreams when we are teachers. We are in the business of dreams when we become parents. And we certainly are in the business of dreams when we're adolescents thinking about our future. So I commend you all to continue dreaming, and think kindly of Dr. King on Monday. Thank you. So there's some important. Okay, thanks again for coming. The next piece is correspondence. I have one piece that was handed to me. It's an announcement to the Leland and Gray Board. It says, "Thank you to the Leland and Gray Board for its continued support of the Journey East program. We are very pleased to announce that due to the efforts of Ms. Diana Urbaska, parent of Emma Urbaska, Journey East 2014, Journey East has received a most generous donation from the Wolf Con Foundation. Additionally, Journey East 2000 alone Brendan Connor secured a generous contribution to the program from Van Eck Associates Corporation, a New York-based financial firm. Given the increased cost of the program in China, these resources provided, provide much-needed support for the success of Journey East 2014. Many thanks are also due to Norman and Maureen Holden for their successful efforts to raise funds supporting the upcoming program." And it's signed Tom Connor. Show it to anybody, pass it around if you want to see it, but it's just basically a thank you note, letting, you know, letting the board know that there have been some very generous donations. Yeah. Anybody else have correspondence?
There was none in the office.
None? Beautiful. All right. Duren, we're now finally to your report.
Okay. The first part of my report was about research on student membership on school boards, and I did make a recommendation based on the information that I had learned. Most notably is that at none of those school boards do students actually have a vote, nor do they attend executive session. So they call them student members of the school board, but they are not members at the level that those who are elected.
Can we discuss that at some point, at the end of your report?
Sure, so, so just, that was the most notable finding, because that's not true at the State Board of Education, where there are two student members, they have another setup, but there's one student who does vote.
They're elected, though, right?
No, students are appointed, right?
They're appointed.
Yeah. All the members of the board are appointed, right?
Yeah, all the members of board, the State Board are appointed by the government.
Oh, okay, well, there's the difference, because this, this would, if you had a student who had a vote, it would fly in the face of the whole one voter, you know, one voter, one vote.
Probably the legal opposition.
Yeah.
Unless we had a student who was 18 and ran.
Who actually ran a town meeting, right.
Yes, yes. So that's, that would be presumably in addition, that's not what was considered in this. And I can talk about more details.
What section are we under here?
Run to the principal's report.
Principal, thank you.
So I, I mean, I would actually, because this is so current, if we are going to have a discussion today, my suggestion would be more about that, because I propose that they even begin as soon as the next board meeting, instead of Vision of Technology, because actually, they have a lot to say about the vision of technology at this last student council, or a recent student council meeting. That would be very interesting to the board, so just suggestion.
And we do have a student here, I think, whether there is a chance, coming from that student? Is that appropriate to ask you? Do you want to be asked?
We have no thoughts on it.
Oh, okay.
He's campaigning to be the student board member.
He's going to be elected from Brooklyn.
Keep coming, you'll be considered that way anyway, Sam.
The difference is you have a seat at the table, so that's for sure. So the second, I mean, I thought we'd revisit it as a discussion topic, so unless the board wants to talk about it. The second topic was that I'm, I've joined the Vermont Principal Association Legislative Committee, which is an hour and a half weekly meeting, late Thursday afternoon, so that I can hear about what's happening on the education committees in the legislature, and be able to give feedback. And I could not have done that until this year. I did not, I still don't have really the time to do it, but I very much have the interest of the school. And given the, what has been proposed in the new education quality standards, which I have been informed were not voted on at the December State Board meeting, so those are still.
They listen to you?
Well, I don't know about that, but I am meeting with the new Secretary of Education, Rebecca Hall come on Friday, to discuss this very topic.
I think that's great. I think that's very important for the kids, the district. Congratulations on doing this.
Thank you, thank you.
Our priority is to get them off our back.
Well, she's doing it, so that's good.
I'll keep it in mind. So, and then I give a whole rationale in here about why I'm doing it. It's kind of like, even think you would ever become political until your back was against the wall, some kind of euphemism like that. And the last part of the report, and every year I do, well, every two years I report to the board on the results of the Vermont Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And this year, I actually added a few more areas to report on. And for the first time in my tenure, which isn't terribly long, things are better. And that was very exciting to see, that the, I mean, I highlighted a bunch of things that I wanted to point out, but on almost every measure, we're better than we were two years ago, in terms of our students being safer at school, being less at risk to either be a perpetrator or a victim of dangerous behavior. I was also thrilled to see that the percentage of our students texting while driving is a lot less than the state of Vermont, so yes, no cell service. So I don't know if that's going to hold true for long, but it's also true of electronic bullying, it's less here. I think that has to do with cell phone service as well, because the bullying of, just regular bullying, is the same, but you might notice that on the bottom of page two, that bullying is down a lot, both just traditional and electronic. But this percentage of students engaging in self-harm, which is the last piece there, being quite a bit higher than the state average. We're talking about one of the five students being greatly worrisome and not unknown to us. So a big piece of our work within the school counseling, and I'm the head of the student crisis team. So, and we did create and institute a student self-harm prohibition. I think this is, I can't remember if this is our, this is our first year implementing it, and it's been very effective in deterring self-harm from what we know, from what we can see, because it's a hidden problem. And the other statistics I was going to point out about, compared to the previous survey, where it says other drug use, about using marijuana, it's significantly lower, and not terribly different from the state average, with the exception of students who said that they were offered it on school property, still significantly higher than the state. But in terms of percentage of students who drank alcohol, we're at the state average, whereas before it was considerably higher, including same with binge drinking. And then a really great statistic was that over a third of our students attend PE classes every week, every day in a week, and it's only 14% for the state. And our volunteer hours are also significantly higher than the state of Vermont. So I'm generally, what should I say, almost gross, looking at Youth Risk Behavior Survey stats for the state, as well as for our own school, but this is the first time I said, oh my gosh, there's actually progress.
I have one very quick question. I think it comes out of my social work background at schools. Do kids that identify as having tried suicide, it's probably an anonymous survey, isn't it?
This is a fully anonymous survey, yes.
Yes, so that concerns me. That is a small percentage, it's the top of that second page, I think.
The 4% or 15%?
Right, right. How, I'm just worried kids that would self-identify as that, how would you reach them or?
So if there is a whole legally required response to any student who makes any reference to self-harm or suicide, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
So that's the whole principal's report, plus the music news. So we talked about it very briefly as a board back in October or November, but we didn't talk about it later, just shared it.
Thank you.
So how far along did this line go? I never heard about it till five. But obviously, somebody did.
Oh, yeah. The administration met with the music teachers first, and I also met with the WCA presidents, or at that time, it was just one president. I don't know when they were elected, I think it was just with Bruce Whitman, who was co-president, informing them of the change. But no, we did not utilize the faculty council process, because for the most part, the master schedule has been in the hands of administration. I don't know for how many years that goes back, but it was certainly my responsibility, and no one coming to help, coming to offer help when I got here. So it was basically the schools, two school counselors, and our IT coordinator, and when there are concerns, I mean, we run, and also the master, the master schedule exploration committee, which started this fall, was absolutely for the 15, 16 school year, because the master schedule that we're talking about for next fall started in the planning already in August. It's a very long process to do, to put all of those pieces in place. I would say one of the biggest issues is the, I mean, really where we got to this idea.
I guess my question is, is this an idea, or is this a done deal?
The ninth period?
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was a done deal until about an hour and a half ago.
That's honest. And now it's a collaborative, you're going to, you're at least going to revisit.
Well, I, we have, it looks like we have to revisit it, but I have to say, if, even if we offer it during B Block again next year, I can't have 50 students with nothing to do during B Block. There needs to be more courses.
Yeah.
Right, there needs to be more courses offered during B Block, and when that happens, more music students won't be able to participate. It's a serious problem. And there's, you know, for the number of students here, there are those who don't have, who aren't, who aren't coming up in ways saying, which is a much greater number of students upset about the schedule, because they couldn't get anything B Block.
They could get banned.
If we could, if they would go.
If they were required to go to something, they'd go to something.
But that's the question that we need to look at. Why aren't they going? I mean, because we did have such an amazing program here for so many years, so something has happened to create this lack of interest. Lack, it was lack of opportunity, I think, that must have come. And then, but, and so you ask yourself, well, we, how can we give them the, you know, so you have this sort of culture now, well, we don't care. But that wasn't the case when more, when they were doing it younger, and they were able to do it sustained through high school. It was really robust, so.
At some point, it becomes a passion thing versus a, versus an educational thing. I mean, you know, my kids both played instruments starting in fourth grade, and they got to a certain point, and they're like, I'd rather take a math class than go to band, because actually, I like math better than band, or whatever. And it's the same, I mean, our sports teams are all cyclical. Sometimes we have a great soccer team, sometimes we have a building year, you know, and I think we just have a building period with band. There's not as many kids who perhaps are as passionate and dedicated to it, they're making other choices. You know, it may be the fact that we lost a charismatic teacher or something too. I mean, there's probably a lot of contributing factors, but I don't think.
There's a bit of a spiral too, you know, as the program attracts fewer people, you have fewer accomplished students on stage who inspire the younger ones.
Yep, absolutely.
And, and it kind of feeds on itself.
Yep.
I was delighted at the holiday concert to see so many musicians on stage, to see so many parents of the audience. Last year, I was heartbroken. It was, it was just so sad. This year was wonderful. And you can clearly see how this resonates very strongly, not just with the people who showed up here tonight, but even, even people who don't necessarily feel as passionate about being in the band, but they get the notion that studying music is something that goes beyond your appreciation of the arts. It teaches you, it teaches children discipline, it teaches them to follow something through. So it teaches them not just the cognitive and thinking patterns and abstract thinking, but also the reward that they get by sticking to something and seeing it through, the grit, if you will, that will serve them everywhere, you know?
Yep.
And so. And so it's, it's clearly something that is going to be, it's going to be difficult. It's going to take a lot of time, a lot of your time, but it's something that needs to be addressed in an inclusive way.
But like you said way back, I think it does need to start down going up a little.
So the 2000 education quality standards requires that all seventh and eighth graders have at least a quarter of fine arts during that year. So we have nine weeks of visual art for, I mean, for every seventh and eighth grader. If that was replaced by something else, that would, that would have an impact on the fine arts, well, the visual art program. So every, the schedules only, only has so much room. Engaging more, I mean, we did start general music, I think it was the year before last, and we have it. It's, it's an elective. It has some students in it. I can tell you that those students have then joined middle school band because there is no conflict for students to take middle school band at all, except if they're in the home program. That's about 10 students, grade seven through nine.
And how many students are in middle school band?
The numbers are higher, in the twenties.
So there's, no.
So what do they do if they're not good?
There are other electives that are offered at that time, and there's English and math support and resource room. And foreign language.
We teach in the classroom.
Probably, probably. Okay. Any more questions on the principal's report? We can skip, skip right over Steve's report, right?
Well, I don't have any written, but I do want to share a couple of things.
Please do.
I do think that the.
Please do.
The, the meeting tonight is perhaps a precursor and an indication of what I predict boards of any small school, including my elementary schools, will be facing in the future. What we have is an expectation to be able to provide some things, you know, some, some learning opportunities to the extent that we have in the past with more students, with more financial resources, with more staff to support, more staffing, that are no longer, or, you know, being reduced. And I, I think that this issue could be revisited regarding, you have, those who've been on the board a while remember quite a bit of concern about driver's education, foreign language, you know, PE. Remember, we had a, we had an issue about a PE proposal from, I think it was actually from the PE department. It may have been before during, but about the PE being required, increasing the PE requirement for graduation. That created, you know, quite some sort of, you know, I'm commiserating with you. I'm not, I'm just pointing out that, that I do think that this may not be the best solution that we have, and it needs to be examined from these different points of view and these different suggestions. I'll be working with Durin as to how to proceed to make sure that every possibility is explored. But I, I raised the issue about the collaboration because, you know, we will be in a mode of collaborating board and administration regarding envisioning how we can have a school sustainable with 350 kids for the next five years. I presented to the faculty when I took off to superintendent at a faculty meeting, I regret to say that the numbers project you will have four fewer faculty members in the future. Well, that has been put off through Durin's creative personnel management. It isn't that there hasn't been some reductions in personnel, but we haven't had, you know, four people reduced. You know, if we think we have problems now, I know we will face problems in FY16 and in FY17 in terms of sustainability. So the question is, the question maybe comes, one actually of a much more dramatic reformation of how we deliver instruction and provide the opportunities for every student to reach, to meet the standard. That's my long lecture about where we're at and what it could be.
I just want to add to that. I think that you may be able to transition and work your way through that difficult passage by using a more collaborative approach.
Oh, yeah.
With the staff and the students.
Yeah. I think this is an indication that there may be sufficient willingness to do that. In the past, there has not been the engagement by the association anyway, in any professional representation way. And although the faculty council has been in place for many, many years and during further empowerment, it hasn't proven to be capable of making the decisions really necessary sometimes to, to secure a better, better path to the future. It doesn't mean it wouldn't work now. So I mean, Durin hasn't given up on the faculty council, but I, I know that the predecessors. I know when I was middle school principal here, I was the one delegate to be the liaison and to be meeting with that group. The high school principal refused to deal with the group because, you know, it was not, it, I mean, one of, it's interesting to me that the students here, so I hope you listeners, you can share. It's interesting to me that the students were given a choice about a change and staying the same. It was preferable to stick with what we got. Right, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that is not surprising to me. I mean, I, I made a point of making, you know, having people make a decision because in fact, students throughout the country, we want to change the beginning of the day schedule, have a late start or whatever, students generally, probably will support this, are generally pretty conservative about what they have. You know, they, it's, they like what they got.
I think the alternative offered here was clearly something that didn't go.
Well, I understand it, but, so that's rejected by this group. I mean, I don't want to debate that. I, I'm just pointing out that when we look to the collaborative endeavor, the, generally the employee, the teacher, and the students are not the source of the progressive radical ideas for change. And that's not surprising to me. That's where the leadership comes in play, and if the leadership doesn't try to do anything, there is no reaction from the public. So I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to put this in perspective, and I expect and anticipate those of you who will remain on the board and can encourage your friends and neighbors to run for position on the board, should, should at least in terms of leader in grade, as well as the elementary schools that I'm working with, be prepared to deal with this. Because I'm not sure where we're going to go, but I know that the present situation is unsustainable. Now, I'll share with you about the board. Townsend, their budget is going up 1.2%. New money.
And what's the tax?
How can they do that? Because they ripped.
Because they.
Rift, reduction in force.
And the tax impact is still.
Tax impact is still 12 to 16%.
Yeah. How big a rift?
Half. They got half through a retirement last year and they got another half this year. Now, we have, you know, student teacher ratios that are, are expensive. And as long as the public wants to continue to pay for them, the, you know, the tax rate will continue to go up. But I'm just pointing out that it's not that boards aren't trying to constrain the costs, nor have you. I mean, you've done the same due diligence, 2.8%.
Yeah, 2.8%.
And what does it turn out to be a tax rate?
Nine.
Yeah, something like that.
Eight, nine, I forget.
That's because you start out at five with the legislature, okay? So is that going to change next year?
We have a representative due now.
Yeah, is that going to change next year? Is that going to change FY17? It doesn't look promising. So Marlborough is the extreme case. Now let's, let's take a very positive case. Wyndham. Wyndham spends $25,000 per student. They, their tax rate is going to be like, impact is going to be like less than 4% or something. Why do they get the good news? Well, first of all, they're not raising the expenses that much to what they're spending. In fact, they're reducing part of a full-time employment contract because they don't have the pre-K kids to justify that employment. They only have one pre-K kid. So, you know, they're, they're cutting costs. They, they continue to project 17, 18 kids. There's 17 and a half. So how are they doing it? It's because their CLA went favored. That common level of appraisal went from 83% this year, or last year, however you call the years, to 95%. And they still have the $75,000 school, small school grant. So, you know, there are reasons why every one of my particular schools has a different circumstance, but they're all in painful situations trying to decide how to proceed. Marlborough, my hometown, I'm paying taxes. The last board meeting, they haven't voted on it yet, but can you imagine sitting here and having Durin say, our special ed costs are going to go from $350,000 to $600,000 next year? And we only have 88 kids in the school. Are they doing their best to cut the cost? They talked their staff into taking no increase in salary. They don't have the union contract.
I know they don't have a union contract.
Now, their budget's going to go up, tax impact, if they stick with what they got, 21.8%. That's the extreme.
Yikes.
Can they control it? By God, if you got your staff working for nothing, they get no increase next year, you done what you can.
Yeah.
You want to get depressed, hang out with me at these board meetings.
No thanks.
Wow.
We, we have two boards that, Marlborough hasn't yet voted. They still might decide to do something. Marlborough has no reserve. The only school that's going down in terms of, elementary expenses is up slightly, but their high school costs are going down is Dover. It's because they just don't have the same number of high school kids anymore they're paying tuition for. See, there are all these uncontrollable factors that make things look, you know, when you want to compare apples and apples, it's really complicated to figure that out. Marlborough's CLA isn't going to change much, so there's no relief there. And so certainly that explains why I want to report that Townsend and Jamaica boards were supposed to meet last night because Townsend had difficulty sustaining quorum. They didn't get it till 7:15 for a six o'clock meeting. You know, I, I made sure the Jamaica board didn't come. I warned them that it may not have a quorum, so they didn't meet. They're going to try to meet on the 21st or maybe at the first meeting in February for, for Jamaica, for Townsend. But that's between the board chairs. They're looking at trying to collaborate because they recognize they can't sustain their budgets, their student teacher ratios at the present levels. And Wardsbury had some money that they could put into, from their reserve to help offset their increases. So they're trying to keep, I think, the tax impact below 10%. Marlborough, well, Marlborough, Dover has money in reserves sufficient, so they can always, they actually vote at town meeting to allow the board to adjust the amount of money they put in the budget out of the reserve to keep the tax rate the same rate it was last year. They have a tremendous amount of money salted away, which is to their credit.
Brookline is the same way.
Brookline, yeah, Newbrook is trying, is putting something away, but not sufficient to have that kind of, that, a positive extent. I think that one of the towns there is at, at under 10%, and the other one is, is at four or five. But don't quote me that. I have a hard, I'm going to try to put a chart together with all this eventually when it gets, gets down, down meeting. But, oh, I know what it is about Newbrook. That, that board, joint board, they only, they narrowed it down with their principal. They only have $10,000 that's a sending option on at all in the budget, you know? So they're, you know, they feel like they've done it the best, the best they can. They once again have some special ed costs. And your budget benefited from a reduction in special ed costs. You have a reduction force in staff. Staff at the WC, you know, under my employment, this case manages from four to three. So anyway, I don't, I'm, I'm a problem solver and I'm going to keep seeking solutions and offering them. But I, I have to say that until tonight's meeting, I didn't have the idea that actually sufficient numbers of students and faculty were engaged in really the seriousness of the situation. Now, most of these people are still concerned about the schedule and how there's a perfect schedule out there that will solve the problems.
Yeah, that evolved as a much bigger issue.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, that's certainly something that Durin and I will have to address. Certainly Durin will make every effort to answer all the questions regarding what is the best solution. But, you know, I, I think that just preparing you as a board for your responsibilities to look in the distance on the horizon about how to sustain this school because we know it's important in this valley to have an educational opportunity at the secondary level. At least that's my conviction. So, thanks for listening. I do have, I wanted to make sure you were clear. I have procured the contract services of Peter Beres. You see there, that is.
He may be sorry.
Well, he, I invited him tonight to try it out. I invited him to try it out tonight, and he's willing to come from Whitingham. And he presses me favorably. I hope the minutes turn out as well for everybody. But I do want to point out to the board that we're, we're paying $20 per hour and we're paying an IRS, IRS rate for mileage back and forth from home. So, and of course, the hours are not limited just to this meeting. They, they would include, you know, the time to prepare the minutes and make sure they're out properly and edited in terms of draft. It's your responsibility as a board to make sure they're accurate afterwards and approve them, of course, before we post the permitting. So, and this contract will continue until it's terminated by one of both parties. So, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure for public record, we have that established. We certainly, once again, commend Tara Minehart for her many years of service to the board and her wonderful unit taking and dedication. And I understand the baby's well, and she's doing fine. Mama Minehart, I guess. Questions?
We should send her a card from the board.
We did.
No, we didn't.
I signed your name.
Good man.
Well, Frank's not here, doesn't have a board. We have enough room in there.
There, in the paper, yesterday, I think, there was a short little blurb that said that there's a, a meeting between the pro-choice and the anti-choice people in the state of Vermont. There's a meeting tonight, a debate. One is by the guy that wrote that article in the newspaper a while ago.
John McClowry?
I don't remember his name. I don't know who's going, you know, representing the groups.
We're talking school choice here, right?
We're talking, oh, yes.
I heard the same thing.
Yeah, at first I was.
Oh, school choice, school choice. Pro-choice is what you're saying.
Did I say that?
Yes.
Oh, I said pro-choice or against.
Well, you can see how we go misled on that.
Yes. So I think that's part of what's going to continue to happen too, is that people are, Dover's already made a decision.
Well.
They're part of supervisory.
They are. They are part of the union school district. And Dover is often one to be independent entirely from the supervisor of the union, have their own superintendent. But I do, I do want to make sure it's clear, Dover, I think, will have an article which tries to return to the statewide average for the public to consider in terms of tuition. Just as I said, I, maybe I didn't share this, but Wardsbury's doing the same. I think I said this with the public.
Well, and Dover pays, Dover, the board came, or the public, you said, the, the group of people came in, voted it to burn, burn full ride to it, full tuition and left.
That's why Dover board was kind of ticked off because they knew what was happening politically. But that's what happens in small town. If you have the votes come in the town meeting and you vote an article through, it's.
Now they're going to propose a new article to put it back where they.
They're going to try. I don't know. It'll come out.
That'll be a fun town meeting.
Well, anyway. Oh, here's some good news. Pre-K, Wardsbury's budget does involve, include a pre-K full-time, full day, pre-K. Pre-K, Wardsbury's budget does involve, include a pre-K full-time, full-day pre-K program for kids. I suggest that this is very important to serve the public. It is expensive. You don't get that much more instructional time out of a full-day pre-K, 'cause you're obliged to have naps and so forth, and you have to have additional para. With a reduced number of students, you can have with an adult. But they're gonna manage it for about four thousand dollars, 'cause they already have a para higher, and they already have a half-day program. Jamaica is thinking of having the same thing proposed at the town meeting, or at least discussed by the board at the town meeting. And Jamaica's would be more expensive, would put about a percent on their budget. The tax impact now is about either six-point-seven or seven-point-eight, I've forgotten. And they're, they're thinking of, you know, trying to raise the issue, would see what the public's sufficient support for full-day pre-K, because it's difficult for parents to manage a half-day with a pre-K student.
Is that three and four-year-olds?
It's only fours. The only place that has a three-year-old program is Dover, and they only have half-day. And Dover has a half-day pre-K as well.
You know, much to my surprise, on national news tonight, that House and Senate combined bill, which is gonna leave us without this cliff for another year, within that package, and the Republicans and Democrats both voted, it was one-point-eight billion for pre-K education.
That'd be very nice.
Head start plus other pre-Ks. So, that was very surprising.
Didn't you want to offer to pay back on that?
Oh, phenomenal.
Four to one or something.
Yeah, right. Yeah, there's no research that in any way questions the investment in pre-K.
It's odd, they came together and voted.
It's a miracle.
Okay. We don't have a Frank. The red report is brief as all get out, 'cause we're, we held our meeting off. Our January meeting got canceled.
It's now the twenty-second.
Weathered off, and it's now the twenty-second. And part of that is to wait and see what the Jamaica and Townsend boards do.
Well, it was, but, you know.
So, I'm hoping they need the twenty-first.
Yeah, I don't know. But I, I do think that the committee will be ready to send the articles to the state board for approval, either at the February or March meeting of the state board. And there is a mailer that is being approved, you know, a single-page mailer to inform the public in all five towns of what the committee has done and how long they've been at, and what they've come up with, and referring people to the website for more information. And then we will be done with our twenty-thousand-dollar grant for the study, once it's approved by the state.
And with all these new budgets, we'll have some real meaningful numbers to throw out, to throw out.
Well, you know, anyway. I think after the state board approves, anything further regarding public information and so forth is up to us as boards and school districts to provide for the public to consider the vote in June, presumably June third.
Hopefully, yeah. Any questions?
Okay. Let's see, who's at that meeting? It's you and Bruce.
Bruce and Emily.
And Emily, yeah.
Yeah, I'll be very, very quick. We had a meeting with the legislators from the, this area, from Wyndham, on the sixteenth of December, and they all said there's a seventy-two-million-dollar deficit in the state budget and the pressure on proper, I mean, we all know that. It was interesting, the education committee representative said their primary goal is to narrow the achievement gap, which they felt was based on economic inequality, rising poverty, and the shrinking middle class. So, they were really, and they said something really interesting, that Vermont nationwide has a very high college entrance rate, but a lack of completion of college, which, which I hadn't realized.
Low rate, lower rate.
Right.
Lower rate than we would hope for.
Yeah. He also said through their education committee, a lot of money is flowing into forestry programs, so I guess that benefits the career center. I won't report on the other committees, 'cause we really have no time. But the appropriations committee said that they are, obviously, they're the key committee at the end of all requests for money. They're all out of one-time fixes. They cannot, at this point, do everything they committed to, and it's, it's just the same story as locally. They also said that Vermont Yankee, excuse me, is taking eighty-seven-million-dollar payroll out of Wyndham County. I guess others may have known that, but that really hit me. I guess I saw it see Vernon, but it's, yeah.
Well, the study has been done. This, I think Townsend is thinking that it might affect six students. I mean, it's not insignificant, but it's not as, it's not dramatic as, as some people have predicted. The fact is only two hundred of the six hundred employees that are employed at Vermont Yankee actually reside in Vermont. And they don't all reside in Wyndham County. So, anyway, it's, it's, it gets spread out.
That was a figure for Wyndham.
Now, you've read in the paper, Vernon, of course, is going through a lot of consideration about cutting their municipal services back as well as the school, the school budget. But actually, the representative from Vernon was there, Kebert, Mike Kebert, and he was saying that the, interestingly, the property values haven't deflated as much as they thought because they have good quality housing there generally, and so, and it's still attractive living in Vermont, so that, you know, their, their market value hasn't taken a tremendous hit that they thought it would. But not everybody's selling their house at the same time, either, and not all the employees are leaving at the same time, either. So, it's, you know, it's, it's a transition over time. It doesn't seem to be having as severe an impact as some people that are inclined to say the sky is falling, but I, I just add one other thing, that when, when you spoke about the committees, it should be clear to you that it was represented, that these were representatives of those committees, who happened to sit on those committees.
Yeah, they're not chairs or anything.
Although, I think man-wearing is pretty powerful on the, on the raising means. But I, I think that, as always, I'm impressed with our legislators, legislators having their, their heads and their hearts in the right direction in terms of trying to come with a solution. But they recognize that this year is particularly challenging for them, because they're starting in the hole when they go to the session, when they, when they convene. They're evaluating a hole by this millions of dollars, I thought it was.
There's a lot of capital travel.
The general fund is about seventeen.
Asking bigger taxes because they served, provided services for neighboring council. Neighboring council has free use of the, but we don't need to get into that.
Yeah, but that is, well, that does point the question that I advocated today with the administrative team. We gotta think more about, more beyond our school walls and our school districts and beyond our supervisory unions to a regional solution. Support of the career center is absolutely essential, in my opinion, and on a per-capita basis, you know as a board, every kid that goes there reduces the income or revenue for this school district. So, there's a, there's a conflict there, and I don't, I'm not happy with that, and I, I don't, I want it to end. I want us to be involved with a broad-based countywide assessment for this career center that has a dependable source of doing the kind of experimental programs and funding security, and not be fighting or competing with the, with the schools like Leon and Gray or Bellas Falls or, or Twin Valley for students. That doesn't serve students well. You didn't know you were being competed for a student. Maybe you do. Maybe you've been recruited already for the career center, but that is the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Okay, Townsend right-of-way.
Stephen? I'll be brief. Emily and I have consulted on this. I have secured the services of legal counsel to represent the board regarding the Leon and Gray right-of-way, which is obliged to be provided for the town of Townsend. As the deed says in nineteen sixty-nine, across Leon and Gray property. It doesn't say where, but it does say at all times. So, this presents a problem for us. We already debated this, so we don't need to talk about it. But you have something, you have a motion to, in your minutes, to approve and support the concept of a right-of-way between the two buildings, Dutton and the town hall. That was the last thing we came up with. The select board didn't tell me directly, but the enforcement officer, the legal counsel for the Natural Resources Board, Act Two-Fifty, permit people, sent me a copy of an email which said that, regrettably, the transportation agent, Agency Transportation, would not approve the select board's proposal to have a new cut. You know, they'd have to have a driveway go out there to Route Thirty. So, that new cut was not approved by Agency Transportation. So, they were telling the compliance officer, actually, her name is Melanie Keen, legal counsel, that the issue had not been resolved. So, I found out about this from her, and, and then, you know, my, our two choices are to go back to what we previously agreed to about the cafeteria ramp going up there or something, but we stipulated it would be controlled for student safety in terms of when it would be in use, you know, when cars driving through there when we got kids between classes and so on. So, that was unacceptable, I think, to the board, select board, although they haven't told me that directly. So, I think that's why we're still in, up in the air. And the other possibility is that our engineer, Stevens and Associates, Brett Sanderson informs me that that apron in back of Dutton is the right-of-way. You have complied with the engineering and the right-of-way requirement. So, it's time for legal counsel. It's time for, you know, lawyers to kind of objectively look at where the best solution is and get it pinned down in our deeds and the right-of-way location and where it is and to what extent.
If this board and the board of selectmen for the town of Townsend have agreed on the space between the buildings.
Why don't the state go by?
What state does, does state have in saying no?
You have to have a ramp, you have to have a permit to have a driveway go out onto a road, even in a town. You know, my town of Marlborough, when I bought land, I had to get the, I had to get, you know, I had to get approval for my driveway to be in a certain spot on my property. And that's what the state's telling them, no one. Now, look, I don't know this firsthand, okay? I'm just giving you the second hand that I, that I take from what the email said to this person, this Melanie Keen. Now, I think it's beyond us trying to come up with creative ideas and, you know. So, Emily and I will meet with our legal counsel, Bobby Fisher, and Brett Sanderson will be there, and we'll provide him with all the documentation, and we'll see where things go, what's the best solution. And nothing can happen without your approval, so we gotta bring back whatever is, you know, to your.
It'll be more executive sessions.
And it would be an executive session when we got to matters of legal counsel regarding right-of-way and deeds and stuff.
Representative of the Agency of Transportation here.
Well, actually, as a member of the public, Mike, you have every reason to probably inquire if actually any permit were denied or what extent was going on there. I cert, I'd rather suspect that, I'll be advising our legal counsel to perhaps look into that venue and see whether it really is closed. Because we thought, they, they proposed that idea. We, we thought it was a good one. That could still.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, that's why we voted on it. That's why he was a board member, which I sent to the Melanie Keen. Anyway, she appreciates our responsiveness. She recognizes that we are exercising all due diligence to pursuing the solution, so she is of no mind to impose a penalty at this point. There is no, one of the reasons is because there is no impending danger to the environment regarding this issue. So, that's why we are given time to continue to work this out. If we were, because we were of our supposed inaction causing some pollution problem, that would require immediate penalty to push us along. It's, it's really enlightening and educational to spend my time on this, but it is, it is really only remotely related to providing education for our students. That's untruly.
You're saying we'll be paying for it?
No, that's why we're paying. Well, it's one of the many things you pay me for, but it's just not one of the things that you'd have highest on your list if you could avoid it. But it's unavoidable, so I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the vision of technology thing. You said something earlier that I'll, that I'll actually point out, that maybe it would be a good idea to wait till the student board representative came, 'cause it is nine thirty-five. But we did put it off last meeting, 'cause it got long, too, so your call.
I would actually suggest what I had suggested earlier, which is we talk about the possibility of inviting students on the school board, and that we talk about it when their students are here, 'cause they do have a point of view. And had they been on back in October or November, when I talk about period nine, they would've jumped right on. So, I think it would be helpful.
I think it's a great idea to put some student work in the passion. You know, bring a couple in here and give them a seat on the table.
So, what about the voting thing? They wouldn't be able to vote, right?
So, if I read, read aloud just the points. So, although they wouldn't have, they would not have the right to vote or attend executive sessions, they would still be referred to as student, school board members. Oh, well, what I want, that's just the logistics. So, basically, when I talked with principals on the phone who do have students on their board, they said the students are incredibly persuasive, thoughtful in their responses, and informative for the, the board. Does that, you know, when they go to deliberate something that the principal's sharing, well, what do you guys think? And I guess that it, when stu, and, and students are very persuasive to board members for their point of view.
But that was my experience when we had them coming to our meetings.
Yeah. When was that? That was before, we had, we had people coming in for, did we actually have anybody appointed in your experience?
You had student council members coming.
Council members came, right. They had a rotating situation, and I was here, yeah, okay.
Is it a legal prescription on the voting that they're hearing, because they're not elected?
Yeah. Makes sense. There were two student council members who were very interested in nomin, then suddenly nominated by the, the, the full student council and seconded, so I've got at least two, if not three students who would like to join.
Can I just ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So, it says that they wouldn't be allowed at executive sessions either, so if that's the case, then what's the difference between just coming and sitting here and sitting there? It's just different spots to sit.
So, I think the title really mattered. When student council members heard, you know, there's class president and there's other titles, but to be able to have that on your high school transcript is something you have done. It's a combination of, of intellectual endeavor, community service, representation of your constituents. I mean, it's, it's quite a prestigious thing to have on your transcript.
And I think for a lot of kids, it's less intimidating if you're sitting at this table as a member of this body to speak your piece freely as opposed to sitting out there and wondering if it's okay to say something.
But other than sitting at the table, there's no real difference other than the title.
No, I think there is, because you would be getting all the materials, you'd be getting all the financial stuff, working on the budgets, you'd be getting all the minutes. You'd, you'd be really very inclusive. I mean, I would like to try to work hard for a vote, but it sounds like it's legally enough. Executive session only deals with personnel stuff, really, doesn't it?
Contract.
Contracts of teachers. It's not, it's not making big decisions for the school. Well, it is in a way, I should say that.
Well, the real decisions.
It's things that are legally protected from being public information.
Yeah, but the real decisions are what you've been hearing going on, so, and you'd be very listened to, as, as Dr. Dorfman has been saying. You are now, but we have to seem to keep turning and calling. I need to say something.
Interestingly, there, there is, if, if you were eighteen, legal majority, there's an open seat in Newfane right now. So, if there were an eighteen-year-old member of the student body in Newfane, they could easily become elected. They have to file a petition to get on the ballot, but, you know, these are not highly competitive races for members of the school board, I regret to say. But that, you know, that is, and in that case, there's no distinction between whether you're my age or you're eighteen on the board.
You also get an email.
You have a, you have, you have a vote.
And that four-hundred-dollar-a-year salary.
That's where we get four-hundred dollars.
And you have, then you're in executive session, because you can be held legally accountable for the, for the confidentiality of the board deliberations. But they don't have that concern with students serving on the board as non-voting members, because anything in public is public record. So, you know, I don't know whether it's tempting enough to you or satisfying, but that is the, you know, that is the, the reality of, and a very significant distinction between an eighteen-year-old able to vote and being an adult and before you're eighteen.
Can we talk about how this per student would be, like, would they be elected by the student body?
Well, what I'm suggesting is that if we start right-of-way. So, we, that, basically, the, the two nominated students from student council, plus Sam, if he wants to do it, if he's shown strong interest. So, it'd really be three, that's what I'm saying, at this point, two or three. So it'd really be three, that's what I'm saying, at this point, two or three, to just surf through the spring and then, that is through June. And when we have student council elections in, I think it's in late May or early June, that that is added to the ballot, so it's, it is voted on by the whole student body.
It's a distinction.
As a position separate from student council.
Yes, yes. And it would, and right now, the ninth graders vote for their cla, their ninth grade class reps instead would be any student grade nine through 12, and they vote for, and all the nine through 12 students vote for those who are running. Speeches, just like we do.
Posts.
Yeah, exactly. Have a week-long campaign.
And just, clear Sam, so through an election process, then the, the board, the board member can feel that they are representing constituency. In other words, people have voted for you to be representing. When it's an appointed situation, then you don't really have that assurance of who elected you or who was, you know, who was, who you're representing. And in fact, the board members of most of my boards are in the position of having been elected or having been appointed and then elected when it came around to town meeting, appointed to fulfill part of a term, unexpired term. But without a competitive race, they, they don't really have an idea of whether their points of view or their judgment was more highly respected than somebody else. And in a student situation, you probably would be. So that would be a further empowered position. In other words, the board, fellow board members, other board members, and I would certainly and, and like Dorfman, be listening to what, as a representative of the student body, this person was saying. Questions?
No more. That's, that's fairly well.
All right. Well, thanks for listening and thanks for asking. You've gone a lot farther than a lot of people just by being willing to commit yourself with time to this, this question.
You live in Brooklyn, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Your pleasure?
Bruce, should this in the end be written up as a policy for the, for the board?
Well, that's a good idea.
Well, I do agree in the end. I think that it would be-
It's not developed.
It would be, it would be premature.
Yeah.
What's the actual person?
And it would take more time to accomplish. I, I think there's a great interest from Durin's part to get this moving with our next meeting, in fact, if possible.
I'm thinking more along the lines of, probably the summer or something like that.
Well, well, that, if that's the board's pleasure to wait until the summer and proceed in that way, but I think the administration's recommending an immediate opportunity. An immediate opportunity requires the direction from the board for the administration to see the student council appoint or empower the administration to appoint, looking forward to implementing a policy that comes from elections by the whole students' body, whole student body next fall. I mean, you can have a motion as specific as that, if that's your sentiment.
And one, and one of the steps that I add here for the recommendations is that this spring, the student council reviews other schools' practices, consult with other student school board members from other schools, and determines things like term lengths and other details as a result of their findings. Because school boards were, or I should say, principals who I talked with were, you know, seniors only, one or, some one term, two terms, you know, only grades 11 through 12. I mean, they had a lot of different cases.
Oh, yeah.
I go out and actively recruit kids. We don't really have elections. I mean, there's a big variety. But they all agree that there was not enough training. And I guess there is no training at the state level as of yet.
Well, there is training available for the-
More training?
For the school boards association, yes. There's quite significant training.
But not for student members?
Well, the duties and responsibility could have shaken off.
Okay, okay.
I, I do think that the things about executive session and all that would be not relevant, but it wouldn't be very much different. I think, I have quite a little packet of CDs about all the responsibilities of board members that might be interesting. Usually, the board members don't want to spend the time with CDs, but the younger generation might be into it.
Should we make a motion to empower Dr. Dorfman to? I don't know what.
Well, are we, are we in favor of, I mean, I certainly think it's a great idea to get a couple of students, and I would say, you know, bring them in at the next meeting, let's hear what they have to say, and, and put them on the ballot for the, for the fall. I think the policy can sort of write itself over the course of a year with an outline, but not everybody's comfortable working.
Well, it would be very exciting for those students to be able to put on their transcript that they were, during the spring 2014, served as a student member of the school board. Something, something language like that, because if they're going to run come May, I don't know. But they'll, they'll test the waters, they're enthusiastic. Another student interested was actually sitting in the audience here. And when student enthusiasm is high, ride the wave, because it's going to die down fast if you don't use it.
Right. Yeah, I think if you put it off, it won't.
Maybe you can just go ahead with that motion.
Well, no, that wouldn't be appropriate.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion that we direct the administration to implement Durin's recommendation for Leland and Gray to include students at our school board meetings.
Oh, well put. I'll second that.
And who made the motion?
Mike.
Mike.
So you're talking one or two students on the board, or how many students are you talking here?
No more than three.
Seconded by?
Two have been nominated by their, by the student council, and one's, another one might be interested.
Okay, all of them?
That the board empower the administration to appoint student body election of board members.
I think, don't use the word empower if you will, I know what that was said, but it should be direct. You're directing the administration to, the principal to implement the recommendation to bring two to three-
Just to bring students.
Yes, to bring-
Or to bring students, I think.
Two to three students to the, to the board meetings.
Yes, you type what I mean, not what I say.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, what I'm trying to make sure is that you're not empowering and setting a precedence for the principal to be appointing these people. You really look forward to an election process in the spring.
Right.
That should be the understanding of the public in this room.
Recommendation is to invite?
No, the, sorry, I'm sorry, read it. It's a, it's a recommendation there. So it's been moved and seconded, I guess, but now we have some discussion. Any additional discussion?
Just vote.
I call a question.
Yeah, so we have, I want to make sure Peter has it. Do you have it, Peter, there?
My recommendation for Leland and Gray to include students at our school board meetings.
Okay.
It says here, anymore?
My recommendation, the board is rec, the board recommends?
Not the board directs Durin.
No, that's Durin's recommendation.
The board directs-
My motion's pointed to Durin's recommendation as written in her report.
Fine, so the board directs the principal to implement her recommendation for the spring, I mean, as soon as possible regarding student participants on the board.
Yes.
Student members on the board.
You got it?
As soon as possible to what, students?
Bring students.
Bring, great, thanks.
Two to three students to become members of the board.
Great.
To be members of the board. Non-voting members of the board, better say that, the public-
Well, that's in her recommendation.
It is in the recommendation, but the public won't read the recommendation.
Which we could put, which we could cut and paste and put right in there.
We could, well, it's in her, it's in her report. It's in her report, so it'll be published in the report. See prin, you could say paren, see principal's report.
Okay.
Okay, so now we can vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? This is big time, Joe, you're on yours, on your watch, we got this done. It's been my wish for about 15 years.
I accomplished something.
Yeah.
I've been looking for this about 15 years. This is great.
The plans for the public information meeting for the, for the budget, that's just how we're going to work it.
On the 28th.
On the 28th of January.
Does everybody have their calendars marked?
That meeting, or meeting at 6:30 with, there'll be a phone review of the audit with Sullivan and Powers. I know Emily will be there, I generally go. Anybody else can show up. Yeah, that doesn't require a-
Doesn't require.
Does not require a quorum, but-
That's at 6:30?
That's at 6:30.
And then at 7, we'll have a regular business meeting and talk about what we're going to do, and then at 7:30 is the public information meeting on the budget.
Right. Did you hear that, Rich? Did you catch that about the schedule next week on the 28th?
Yes. Is the first part of that meeting public?
Yeah, 6:30, the, well, the audit, audit part is as well, but it's not a convened meeting. But, but at 6:30, there'd be a convened meeting of the board.
At 7.
At 7, sorry, at 7. Is a convened meeting of the board, which is the usual time, so that'd be fine.
That'll be after.
Well, you know, one problem is that, that I know Emily was concerned that the stu, that the principal was-
The superintendent's evaluation always happened at the end of the meeting, when everybody's like, if you started right now, you're probably going to say, oh my God.
Good luck. Well, anyway, so I, I think you'll have to wait and hear from Emily regarding the plan on the superintendent's evaluation.
Well, I think we're trying to get it done that night.
It is.
If it goes really long and we can't do it that night, I know Emily and I talked about how it might be able to slide another meeting.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, we're, we're hoping to fit in the executive session for the superintendent's evaluation. It depends on how many people show up for the budget information.
If I may suggest, having talked with Emily, I know that she looks forward to having members of the board better informed or feel more confident about certain parts of the budget. So if you look at the budget, they all have copies of it or you can see it online, and you have an area that you feel particularly fond of or are particularly interested in, if you can look to that part of the budget and the annual, annual report, which is actually going online, when is Peter putting it up? I know it's the annual report. It's going to be up shortly. I don't think it's actually online yet.
No, it's not.
It has gone to him in terms of final edits, that Peter Bookol will put on the website. But that will be published, printed, and sent out or available to people. So I'm just pointing out that I know Emily, and I, I don't think you'd mind if I encourage you to take a particular interest in the area of the budget, so that when there's a presentation about the budget or questions, it isn't just a matter of the public speaking with the chair, it's the public speaking with the board.
Is there a date on the public information meeting?
Yeah, the 28th.
January 28th.
Great, thanks.
Yep. And that, yeah, but the public part of that meeting, the information part is scheduled for 7:30, is it? No, we're scheduling for 7:30.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, 7:00 PM is regular business, 7:30 is the public information meeting on the budget.
Okay.
And 6:30 is the audit review.
And then on the following week, on the 4th, we'll have the meeting down in the gym, and that's the annual district meeting with all the towns. And that, that will be once again at 7:30. And I think for that one, you agreed, unless you're otherwise, you'll just meet slightly before that or make sure you're there on time in your, in your places at the meeting. I think that's what Emily was telling me.
Right, we usually show up a few minutes early, call it to order real quick, and then-
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
And then we adjourn to do that.
I see, okay. Well, we'll stay tuned on that, we'll decide that on the 28th, but 7:30 is the public part.
But we don't adjourn, we suspend or whatever.
The annual meeting, especially if you've got to do the superintendent's report that night, but the annual meeting, district meeting is chaired and moderated by Ralph Coleman. Remember that, it's a different kind of meeting than your board.
Right.
Okay, questions?
Okay.
Thanks.
The next one's quick, it's election of school directors at annual district meetings. Basically, who's up and who's running was just the poll that we were interested in getting. Up for reelection in March.
You know what, it's three years.
No, you have a three-year term. Paul, you're up, right?
I think I have another year.
You have another year?
You?
I have one.
I think it's you and, it's me, I know. I think it's me and Paul.
You and Paul.
It's me and Paul. Paul says he's, he's good for another year and I'll, I'll stand for reelection.
I'm up.
You're up?
Yeah, I'm going to step down.
Okay.
Who you got?
Do you know if there's other people?
Yeah, I do.
Is it, is it a long list?
No.
A heated race?
It might be a bit of a race, but I, it's not a long list.
It will be from the floor, so.
Yeah. I know Howie Iris is interested in.
He's already on the floor, doesn't he? He's been on the board.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah.
Gone but not forgotten.
Exactly. And then, yeah, that's, that's, that's somebody, I guess that's the only sure person I know, but there's been some other, you know, mumbles.
Should I get the list for this?
No.
No, no, it'd be unfair in terms of giving certain people advantage.
Yeah, yeah.
No mention about this, except that the board discussed what vacancies were available and-
But if you happened to watch into the third hour of TV, you'd get it.
Right.
You're really so intrigued.
Well, we've been captivating, I guess.
And what happens to that June 2nd election, is that, that?
No, the June 3rd, that would be regarding the WCED, that's the red, and that's a, that's a different issue.
We don't need to discuss it.
And that would, once again, be by Australian ballot for the positions on that board at the same time, but that's going to require probably new petitions and the whole deal. Going around, I, I know that Newfane has some positions open, I think at least two. And that's all I can remember from my, I don't have all my warnings here, but that, you know, I leave it to your towns to figure this out. In Jamaica, for example, I don't, I can't remember what the situation is. But it's important to figure it out.
But I also think I've seen, I've seen she's going to run again.
Well, we certainly don't want to have open seats. We've had an open seat in Newfane for a year at least, I, you know, since the last election. Then we, we're able to, we're never able to fill that fourth seat for Newfane.
Right. That's potentially going to go away based on population, right?
Well, that's, that's a good thought. Just know what the charter says, it's one board member for every 30, 30 students. So if you're over, you know, if you're over 90, you have four board members.
Okay. Newfane was 102, I think it said, it was now, tonight, for last year.
Yeah, last year. I don't think it's changed.
I doubt that, yeah, right.
Yeah, I think there's still. Okay, so bills and pay orders, you guys reviewed them, they're all good?
Yep.
You want to make the motion?
Right, I'm making the motion.
No, you can make the motion.
No, I have something-
Well, I can read them. We have bills and pay orders, I won't read each warrant in the, in a separate amount, but we have general warrants of $688,835.84 and payroll cycles 101, totaling $229,256.46 for a grand total of $918,086.30.
So in case you couldn't memorize those numbers, Peter, they usually pass it over to you here.
That to Peter and so the-
We know you're quick.
I'm good, but I'm not-
Need a motion?
See what you could be quiet on.
And I'll second it. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and pay orders as read. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.[1695.62]